We need to get the entire police forces here.
Okay, we're on camera, by the way.
Yep, we sure are. I can have your attention, we're going to call to order this meeting of Ferndale City Council for Monday, December 16th, 2019 at 7:00 PM. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Marnie, will you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Here.
Councilmember Music?
Here.
Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor Proton Polika?
Here.
Councilmember Whitey?
Here.
And Mayor Martin?
Here. We have a quorum and everybody's here. Third agenda item is approval of the agenda. What's the pleasure, Council?
I would move that we...
Um, sorry, yes. I would like to pull item 7C to regular agenda.
All right, 7C, we'll move to the regular, become regular agenda item F.
And will we need to move 7J as well?
Yep.
And 7J as well.
All right, 7J will become regular agenda item G. Any other changes? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move...
Oh, go ahead.
I move that we accept the agen... the regular agenda item. I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
As amended.
As amended.
Support.
Moved by Leaks May, supported by Polika. Any discussion? Marnie?
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polika?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes, the agenda's approved. Next is presentations. We'll start with the presentation 4A, which is a presentation of Police Department Awards. And Dennis Emy's gonna do that. Great.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the pleasure today of awarding two life-saving awards and a certificate of appreciation for a citizen who went above and beyond in the event of that life-saving award. So, Mr. Arfet Al Dalami, you please stand up here and be recognized, sir. So, on 7/2/19, at approximately 17:19 hours, Mr. Al Dalami was driving for a transportation company on Woodward Avenue near Nine Mile when his passenger began to have trouble breathing. Mr. Al Dalami located Officer Lumpke conducting a traffic stop in the area and flagged him down for help. Officer Lumpke found the passenger's skin to be turning blue and he was unconscious. Officer Lumpke recognized the symptoms of an overdose and immediately called for rescue. The passenger was not breathing, but still had a pulse. He pulled the passenger from the vehicle and administered the first dose of Narcan. Sergeant Kuzdale arrived on scene and administered a second dose of Narcan. The passenger regained consciousness and his breathing returned to normal. Without the combined efforts of these three nominees, the passenger would not have survived this overdose. So, Mr. Al Dalami, I want to present you with a certificate of appreciation and a war for your citizenship.
Thank you, sir.
Would Sergeant Kuzdale and Officer Lumpke come forward, please? I'm gonna save everybody reading the citation again, but basically, these officers, their actions resulted in saving the life of an opioid overdose.
Thank you. Well done, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I thought all the police presence was here because our county executive was here. I didn't know. That's fantastic. Which brings us to our next presentation, which is recognition of service to the city of Ferndale. So, as most of you are aware, this is the last meeting for many of us up here, and so we want to take a moment of what's been a fairly unique council session to recognize the service of folks to this city. And I'm gonna start, and then we're gonna kind of jostle it around a little bit. If I can lift it, because it's about 100 pounds. Start with our former mayor and county executive, David Coulter.
Come on up.
So, County Executive Coulter, of course, was the second longest-serving mayor in the city of Ferndale, and tonight would mark the end of his term had he not prematurely departed us, but it was well-served, not drastically, but it was well-served and really worthy of recognition and acknowledgement by the city. So, I just want to thank you for all your hard work and contributions and coaching and mentoring and everything else, so.
It really is worth your weight, so thank you for everything.
Take it out of there, let's see it. Come on, yeah.
Wow, that is gorgeous.
Thank you.
All right, who's next?
Well, if the mayor would allow me to take the floor for a minute.
Of course.
This is your last meeting. You have served our community for more than eight years, really. You've served on council, but you've been on boards and commissions even before that. You have worked with nonprofits before you came on council, but you have done incredible work on, for the city, as a council member and as mayor for the last several months. And so, as a token of our appreciation, we would like to present you with... Smaller, but it feels just as heavy. We'll get it afterwards.
We'll do it at the end.
Yeah. We're gonna be here a while.
Thank you very much, yes.
I don't know if anybody else on council wants to say anything at this point?
I would, I think I'll save mine for Call to Council.
Okay.
All right. I would like to, actually, because I have a lot for Call to Council tonight, I feel like. First, I want to thank Dave for all of your advice over the years, not just with things and ideas that I brought to council, but also help with planning Ferndale Pride and always being a great supporter. It's, I think, pretty rare that there is a mayor in a city that you can call and say, "I need to do something on city property on a Sunday, and we're gonna give you 24 hours." And you have always said, "Okay, let's do it, whatever you need." So, thank you for all your support, so that we can build the great LGBT community in Ferndale. And also, I want to thank you to Dan, who served as our liaison to the city on Ferndale Pride's committee. I hope you continue to join us for our meetings, as you have really great input and ideas about how to involve all of our community in Ferndale Pride. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dennis, I don't know if you want to say?
Yeah, just, actually, I'll save most of mine for Call to Council, because, you know, I'm very short on words at the end, right? But I do want to thank our county executive, since you're still here and I don't know if you're busy, need to leave, but I personally appreciate your mentorship. I first met you years ago when you lived on Channing Street, three streets from me, when you ran for county commissioner. I remember, who's this young guy who was gonna run for county commission against someone who's been in forever, and everybody said impossible, and I thought, "He's actually gonna do this." And so, ever since that time, I've always looked up to you as a mentor. I think you're a mentor towards not only youth, but LGBT youth, as well as rising to positions of power and authority and doing excellent things with it. I'm extremely happy, not just with your service to the city, everything that has gone on in the county. I mean, just think about it, in a matter of a couple of months, how things have drastically have changed in our county, so much for the better. And that is strictly because, basically, you're there. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm actually not done, because I wanted, on a personal level, I wanted to give something to Dan. Be afraid, be very afraid. It's no secret that our friendship has run deep for many years. We've known each other for a long time, and as I mentioned before, you were instrumental in doing a lot of things on council, but I thought it best to at least memorialize one ordinance that was...
Oh, dear.
...life-changing for the city and the community.
Lovely. It's a count your chickens' board game. Thank you very much.
A recognition of the chicken ordinance, which I think was the first one that you worked on when you came on council in 2012.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're very welcome.
All right, so we have a couple of other council members to acknowledge. So, I would like to acknowledge Julia Music and Dennis Whitey, the two council members that kind of stepped in to just do what I always knew they could do all along. So, I'm just really going to miss you guys. I hope you're gonna stay involved. I miss... I just, you know, Dennis, our walks, our talks, Julia, volunteering, I mean, I think you hit me up to volunteer for Pride so many years when I was on the school board, and now, and how involved you've been. And I just hope you both to stay involved, because you guys came on council and just came in and been a part of ordinances, past and possibly future, and I'm just really proud of all the work you guys have done in like, a total of, what, six months, I think, combined? I'm just really proud of you guys, and I just hope you stay involved, because I'm counting on it. I'd be disappointed if you didn't.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I just want to echo that, and I'll say more at the end as well, but it just, you know, I think folks realize, or maybe they do or don't, that this job is a lot of work. It's a lot of prep time, it's a lot of study, it's a lot of getting to know things, and the two of you came up to speed very quickly, which you're both smart, creative, wonderful people. I have no doubt that you would do that, but it's just really, has impressed me how much, for such a short time, you've embraced the role, dug in, both of you, and just done amazing work. And so, I think you added a lot of, a lot to this council session over the last, you know, council session being two years, but, you know, tagging on for the rest of it, and it's just really been an honor to serve with you, so.
Thank you. Likewise.
Sure. Come on back up, Dave. Marnie? So, this is gonna be a pyramid with me on top?
Okay, well, let's break up this...
Through the chair, if I may add a comment as well, from the administration side. I'd like to acknowledge the attendance of many of our public servants who are here to acknowledge the service of city council, those outgoing and those continuing forward. It is an absolute pleasure to serve such an engaged, committed, and forward-thinking group of public servants, and I think that's reflected in the turnout of our staff here to pay the respects to those today. So, thank you.
Thanks very much. Are we, we're good to move on? Great. So, next presentation is 4C, Community Affordability and Inclusive Housing Action Plan Update. Adam, you want to come forward? Or down and across?
Good evening. Two years ago, almost to the day, December 17th, 2017, council adopted the inclusive housing policy, which sought requirements for affordable housing on development of city-owned property. In that time, we have started working with housing expert, LSA, to build out the Community Affordability and Inclusive Housing Action Plan, which seeks to take that council priority, expand upon its goals, create definitions, and further build a toolkit to help implement affordable, inclusive housing in the city of Ferndale. And tonight, from LSA, we have Ryan Price, who has a presentation on where we are in the project, what we've learned from our community-wide survey, and where we'll be taking the project in the direction. And I did want to note, in the end of January, we don't have a set day, but probably the third week of January, at the latest, the fourth week of January, we'll have a community town hall and Q&amp;A session, where all members of the public are invited to share information and ask questions and dig into what inclusive housing and affordable housing is, which is a very deep and honestly, sometimes confusing issue to people, because there's so many facets to it. So, Ryan?
Thanks, Adam. For the record, my name is Ryan Price with LSA. Good evening, mayor and council members and Ferndale community. I'm Ryan from LSA, and I'm here tonight, excited to be here to give you an update on the inclusive housing planning effort that's underway now in the city. And as Adam mentioned, the plan is part of the broader inclusive housing initiative. It really aims to address the rising cost of housing here in the city and to, you know, preserve the accessibility of Ferndale to citizens, families, individuals from all different backgrounds and all walks of life. And so, the goal of the plan is really to work with the community to create, you know, an actionable plan that will expand housing options and, you know, create and sustain Ferndale as an inclusive place. And so, this plan is gonna have strategies that will, you know, support production of housing, you know, new housing, all different types of sizes, price points, types of housing, but also preservation, you know, of the existing housing stock that's on the ground. And so, tonight, I just have a brief presentation to kind of give you an update of what we've been going on over the past few months with the community. We'll walk through the definition and the principles of inclusive housing that were created by the community. We'll also review some of the draft goals and focus areas of the plan, and then talk about next steps and the next phases that will be coming out in the next couple of months. So, following the release of the Housing Market Analysis and Demographic Trends Report that came out over the summer, a series of focus groups were held with various community stakeholders and organizations here in Ferndale. Following those discussions, an advisory group was formed, and the members of the advisory group are citizens here in Ferndale and also local stakeholders in the community. The role of the advisory group is really to kind of guide the direction of the plan, to channel input and feedback from the community, and to serve as kind of experts of Ferndale and to provide, you know, valuable insights to us, the project team, about this community, specifically related to housing goals and housing needs. And so, the advisory group has been meeting monthly and have really helped to shape kind of these fundamental elements that we're gonna be talking about here this evening for the plan. And so, in addition to the advisory group feedback, there was also a community survey that was circulated during the fall to get feedback from the wider community on these important early stages of the planning process. So, the next steps, as Adam mentioned, we're gonna be having a community-wide meeting in January to talk about some of the goals and some of the tools and strategies that might make sense in the plan. And then, we're also gonna have another advisory group meeting around the same time period to kind of refine those and start taking a look at the recommendations. So, as I mentioned, the community survey was administered and circulated in the fall. We had over 200 respondents, and as you can see here, a vast majority of the respondents are current Ferndale residents. The survey covered a wide range of topics, you know, the definition and the principles, of course, but also started to sort of hone in on the community priorities as they relate to housing and, you know, the types of partnerships that could be leveraged here in the community. One of the key, kind of initial steps, is really to define what inclusive housing is in Ferndale, as it's gonna be a lot of variations from one community to the next. And so, the advisory group collaborated to create a draft definition of inclusive housing. And so, that definition was incorporated into the community-wide survey, and as you can see on the chart here, it might be a little hard to read in the audience, but it's about 2/3 of the respondents of the survey, 63% felt that the draft definition was reflective of their views, and an additional 21% felt that it was somewhat reflective but needed some refinements and some tweaking. And so, we got a lot of really good feedback, rich feedback, from the community on that. Some of the themes were, you know, to make the definition more specific, and in doing so, making it more transparent. Another theme was to make it more specific to housing, and so, before, it was a little more broad-based, and so, we made some refinements to it based on the community feedback, and this slide just sort of shows you a mocked-up version of that draft definition. And so, based on the feedback from the survey and the advisory group, we now have a revised draft, which I'm gonna read aloud to the community. Inclusiveness is a key part of Ferndale's identity as a community. Inclusive housing in the city means housing options throughout the city for people from all walks of life, all backgrounds, and all income levels. This represents people of all ages, races, ethnicities, abilities, sexual orientations, and gender expressions. Inclusive housing options represent a wide range of housing types, sizes, and prices that ensure equitable access for people who want to live in the Ferndale community. So, that is the definition of inclusive housing in Ferndale, based on the community's input. So, the advisory group also got together and developed a set of principles, inclusive housing principles. And, you know, the principles are important, because they really provide sort of the vision and articulate the intent of the plan. And so, the survey also included these principles. Again, about 2/3 of respondents felt that they were reflective of their views, so there was support within the community for the draft. Another 17% felt that needed some refinement, but was somewhat reflective. Some of the themes of the changes, really, again, adding specificity, transparency to the documents, and then also incorporating more civic engagement in the principles. So, these kind of showed the mocked-up versions, and so, we ended with a list of five inclusive housing principles. Ferndale strives to be a community that is welcoming to everyone. This inclusiveness makes our community healthier, vibrant, and more resilient. A wide range of quality housing options in Ferndale is essential for our community to be inclusive. If a person or household would like to be part of the Ferndale community, we resolve that housing options can be accessible to them. The city government will take a leadership role in facilitating inclusive housing options in Ferndale through policies and programs. Civic engagement will be a vital part of this effort. Creating a range of inclusive housing options in Ferndale can include partnerships among public, private, and nonprofit groups. And lastly, we are a community that values diversity, including people of all ages, races, ethnicities, abilities, sexual orientations, and gender expressions. The city of Ferndale will be proactive in advancing policies and programs that create inclusive housing options that encourage diversity and accessibility in our city across the income spectrum. So, based on the community dialogue thus far, the focus groups, you know, the monthly advisory group discussions, the community survey, the market study that was conducted, eight focus areas have been identified, as you can see on the screen here, and these focus areas really provide the structure for the plan. And so, these provide the structure for the goals, and we're gonna go over those in the next couple of slides, and then the goals will really inform the types of tools and the types of strategies and policies that would be included in the plan. So, in total, there's eight goals, one for each focus area, and then 32 sub-goals, which sort of dig into the details of each sub-area. And so, the focus areas that were identified through the community engagement were seniors, economically vulnerable, homelessness, environmental sustainability, workforce housing, homeownership, renters, and diversity of housing stock. And so, you can see, it's a pretty wide range across the gamut of housing, and we'll get into a little bit more of the details here in a minute. So, this slide, I'm not gonna read this, but this shows the actual goals that were developed, have been reviewed by the advisory group and staff. These are gonna be going to the community in January for feedback and input. And like I said, these goals really help to kind of provide the template for the plan, and so, the types of goals really inform the tools and the strategies that will best achieve the goals. So, as we think about sort of the next phase of the project, as, you know, as the goals and focus areas start to get refined, really thinking about it as a framework, and so, the strategy, there's three distinct kind of categories that strategies can fall into, those being land use and kind of regulatory strategies, financial tools, but also coordinating of services. And so, there's a list here, these, you know, some of these may work in Ferndale, some of these may not, but this is just sort of to give a flavor of the types of tools that other communities have used in these, this framework. And then, the three bullets at the top just sort of highlight kind of the overarching paths that, to achieve inclusive housing. And so, it's either gonna be through creation of new housing units, new housing stock, it's gonna be through preserving existing units, not only the physical structure, but also the affordability of the existing housing stock, and then, lastly, it's, you know, utilizing resources more efficiently and creating access through education. So, the next steps, this is a very fluid process right now, the next steps for engagement are gonna be towards the end of January, a community-wide meeting, and then, again, we'll have a advisory group meeting, which is also open to the public, and we certainly invite anyone who's interested to join in those discussions. And yeah, look forward to any questions that you have or any comments on the goals, and thanks for your time.
Thanks. First question, this, we say we're rolling this out in January, but this slide deck's available online right now, correct? With our agenda?
Yes, this is available online.
And what is the date of the community meeting in January? Do we have that?
So, we do not have a firm date yet. In talks with staff, we were looking at the third week, maybe the 22nd. It looked like the city council, or the city calendar was open on that day, so I think that was sort of the target date. But it's, once it's firmed up, we'll certainly broadcast all the information and send that out through social media and through emails and...
And are there other opportunities to provide feedback, other than the community meeting?
Yes. We encourage any comments and participation. There's a website, a city website, with all of the resources. The staff liaison to the project is Adam Loomis, and you can certainly email our project team with any feedback, and then also reach out to the advisory group. So, one of the important roles of the advisory group is to really be the channel of input from the community. You know, they're in the community, they're engaged, and so, we certainly, if anyone has any feedback they'd like to provide, certainly reach out to the advisory group.
So, if I'm a resident watching this at home and I have some ideas I want to send or some questions I want to ask about this, where do, who do I email specifically? Do we have an email address, Adam?
Yeah.
Hi. Yes, on the Ferndale webpage, as soon as you land on it, scroll down, you'll see project pages. Under the Community Affordability page, there's contact information, kind of a frequently asked questions, the market analysis, some of the documents that have been generated, the draft goals and definitions, and then my contact info... goals and definitions, and then my contact information. So, if I, I can either provide the answers or be the conduit to the...
It's such an important topic, I want to make sure we cast a broaden that. Maybe we can do a teaser out to get, draw people to that site in that direction.
Certainly, yeah. And really, it is about capturing information at all point in time throughout this project, and even after it concludes. The continued collection of information and opinions is strongly encouraged.
Sure, thank you. Questions from council?
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Next, we have call to audience. Call to audience is an opportunity for anyone in the audience to come up and address council for a topic that's not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes, and we'll cap the total time for call to audience to 30 minutes. Oh, Lord.
You said I get 30 minutes?
No, I said you get three minutes.
Oh, oh.
And if we need more time, we'll tack it on to the end of the, of the agenda. Mr. Coulter, would you like to kick us off?
Well, I did, because you didn't give me a chance to speak, although you gave me an incredibly beautiful gift. So, I just wanted to thank you all so much for inviting me back for this special night. I want to share with you that it, you know, this group of people here, not just, especially those of you serving, but also the staff and everyone here that works for the city and supports this city, has been so special to me. And this is a special place, and we always knew that. But I want you to know that I wouldn't be in the position that I'm in now had I not been the mayor of Ferndale. They didn't appoint me because I was county commissioner for eight years. People don't even always realize what a county commissioner does. But I will tell you that as I travel Oakland County, it's really obvious how much respect and admiration people have across this county for Ferndale. I know it was one of our strategic goals to be a role model for other communities, and wherever I go, northwest, you know, not just in our little neck of the woods, people see Ferndale as an innovative and successful and vibrant community, and I often say I'm just trying to make Oakland County a little bit more like Ferndale. This is a really special place. I've been surprised how many people have asked me, well, so are you moving? I said, Ferndale's in Oakland County. I know, I love it here, and of course, I'm not moving. So, I just, I just wanted to take a moment to thank you each personally. I've missed you all a lot, but I didn't realize how much until tonight until I got to see all of your faces. So, it was an honor and a pleasure to serve the citizens of this city for almost nine years and to get to know all of you. And Mayor Martin, I want to congratulate you on carrying the torch so ably since I left.
Thanks.
You guys haven't skipped a beat, and so, I just wanted to personally thank you for all that, and thank you for what you have allowed me to do. Thank you.
Thanks. We've certainly been missed, but you're doing great work. Thank you. Come on up, I'm sorry. I, I'm going to go a little off course because I should have acknowledged our state representative during presentations, but it's my last day, you know, what do you want?
It's like serving in legislature, I'm just figuring out where the bathrooms are. I'm term limited, so it's unfortunate.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine, don't even worry at all. No, I actually wanted to come, I'll give a brief update of what happened and what's going on in Lansing, but first wanted to come out here, I knew about this meeting, Joe told me about it, but to thank now former Mayor Coulter for all of his work and effort for the city for nine years and on the county commission, and then especially the work that he's doing now at the county level, an amazing regional partner with Wayne County and Macomb County and the things that you're doing, it's just unbelievable. In the four months, how long's it been? Four months. So, want to thank you for that and congratulate you and keep up the good work. Also, to Mayor Martin, thank you for your work here, not just as mayor but as a council member for all these years. I think Executive Coulter said it best, this is, you know, Ferndale is so highly respected, not just in Oakland County but around the state. You know, when I talk about the communities that I represent, there's seven different communities that comprise the 27th district, and everyone always asks about Ferndale, and everyone always has a good thing to say about Ferndale, and most people say they've spent a lot of money in Ferndale. They've been here for the restaurants, for the bars, and just, you know, Ferndale's has been heading in the right direction for a long time, and you guys are an example for everyone in the region. So, I want to thank you for that, and that's because of your leadership and your leadership. And to congratulate the two council members that are also coming off after, this is the last meeting, right?
Correct.
You know, Councilmember Music, I know you very well, growing up in the same community, actually, and getting close with you from Ferndale Pride and the work you do with that, it's unbelievable. And so, to have your voice here on the council has been, has been really important for these last few months, same for Councilmember Whitey as well, and for all of you. This is a very, this is a very selfless job, right? You're doing this because you care and because you want to help, and it's a very thankless job. Most people don't realize the time and energy and effort that you put in, but it's not just when you're here at the council meetings, it's all the homework, all the things you have to do at home, and when you're in public, people want to talk to you about every issue. So, it's not like you can turn it off, and I know that all too well. And, but we do it because we care, right? We love the people in the community. So, I just wanted to congratulate all of you, thank all of you, and wish all of you nothing but the best. So, with that, yep, my pleasure. With that, I'll just do a brief update of what's going on in Lansing, and then I'll get out of your hair and let you guys continue. We finally finished the budget. Yes, that has actually given a round of applause. You know, we had a new governor this year, we had a mixed legislature, if you will, we had Republicans controlling the House and the Senate and a Democratic governor. There was a budget that was presented in March that had to be done by the end of September, and I think I've talked about it here when I've come to visit. The budget was done on time, so government thankfully didn't shut down, but the governor did line item veto 130 something, I forget the exact number, quite a few line items that she vetoed because ultimately, the legislature would not keep her at the bargaining table to let her negotiate with them. They shut the door on her and just said, this is how it's going to be, and sent her the budget, and she used the power that she has and she was able to do. I didn't love all the things that she cut, but she needed to stand strong and show that the legislature isn't the only branch that should be working on our budget, that they have to work together with the executive branch as well. We just, last week, finally passed a budget supplemental. We did not reallocate all of the money, but most of the programs that people were reaching out to me and other representatives about were funded. So, you know, if there were some things that people think we missed out on, please reach out to me and let me know. The next budget process starts in a few weeks, so we're going to be working on that. So, that was kind of the big issue. And then, one other thing, because there was that housing presentation just before I came up, I actually met with Heather Today, the executive director of the Housing Commission here in Ferndale, to talk about some of the work that we're doing in Lansing. I actually just recently introduced legislation myself and Youssef Robi, who's a state rep from Ann Arbor, trying to prevent discrimination when it comes to housing and your source of income. We've seen far too many times where people will see if you have some kind of government subsidy or even veterans, you know, from veterans benefits, that people will deny you or not even look at your application. And so, the legislation that I introduced makes it so you are required to factor in that income when you're looking at a person's total income as to whether they can afford to live in the housing. So, we also went in to also make sure that, within Elliott Larson, which we'd love to amend for many other reasons, for sexual orientation and gender identity, but also talking about how you can't discriminate someone based on their source of income when it comes to housing. So, legislation that we just introduced a couple of weeks ago, working alongside with the Community Housing Network and the Michigan Coalition to Prevent Homelessness. And so, they were our partners and worked with us, and there's some other states that have introduced this. And so, we're trying to help everyone find a place to live. So, worked on that. So, those are kind of the two main things, and again, I won't talk too long. Feel free to even, I don't know if I already passed that point, but...
You're fine.
If people do have questions or want to reach out, you know, we host our community conversations, so this will be the last thing I'll leave you with. You know, we host our community conversations here. Senator Moss and I are obviously very close, as you've seen us here before, Tweedledee and Tweedledum, or, you know, frickin' frack, whatever you want to refer to us as. We do our joint community conversations, and we have two upcoming in January. First one is at the Pleasant Ridge Rec Center at 12:30 on January 17th. Again, it's 12:30, January 17th, at the Pleasant Ridge Rec Center. Everyone's welcome. You don't have to live in Pleasant Ridge, you can live anywhere, don't even have to live in this district. Also, we're having a community conversation at affirmations. So, we will be at affirmations on January 23rd at 6:30 PM as well. And so, we'll give you an update of what's going on in Lansing, and then it's more just kind of an organic conversation for people to come to us and voice any questions, concerns, suggestions, things like that. So, just want to encourage people to come out to both of those, and I think that's it. So, with that, again, thank you all, wishing everyone here and at home and watching a happy holidays and a happy new year, and hoping 2020 is an amazing year for all of us. So, that's it. So, I don't know if any of you have any questions about the work in Lansing, anything? If not...
Questions for Robert? All right, thank you, and again, I'm sorry.
No apology necessary. I'm happy to come talk whenever you need me to.
Thank you.
So, thank you, guys.
All right, back to call to audience, I apologize. Evelyn, come on up.
Evelyn Elster, West Strayton. I just wanted to mention how greatly disappointed I am that you couldn't come up with a prohibitive ordinance to hydro fracking and hydro fracking wastewater storage in Ferndale. I understand it was a question of priorities, and it's not on your list.
Thank you, Evelyn. I will say, just for public information, that it's still being worked on, and it required more staff time, so stay tuned. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, good evening, council. Before I start, I actually came up here with a different thing, but I do want to take this opportunity since we're all thanking our county executor. I wanted to thank Dave Coulter as well. You may not know this, but Dave has been a mentor of mine for the last couple of years while I was leading affirmations. He mentored me throughout that transition, and even as I dabbled in politics, he provided some guidance, providing his expertise, and I really, really appreciate that. So, when Councilwoman Music was talking about having an accessible leader, he was definitely accessible. So, he's on my, you know, I can call him on his cell phone, text him, and he's, he responds, and you don't get that from a lot of leaders in other communities. So, thank you, Dave. With that being said, a lot of things are happening at the state level and at the county level, and even here within the city of Ferndale, in terms of how do we become more inclusive and how do we make sure that we address a lot of insecurities. And one of the things that I wanted to bring up is you may have read on the December 5th edition of Between the Lines, affirmations in Corktown Health Center, creating a partnership to address healthcare insecurities. And I think that that's significant because, one, it's happening in Ferndale, and number two, because we're addressing an issue that impacts not only Ferndalians but truly a lot of people in the greater Detroit region. And I think it's exciting that this partnership is happening here in metro Detroit. And the reason being is because when you benchmark LGBT centers across the nation, only eight other centers provide healthcare, address healthcare insecurities. And the fact that it's happening here in Ferndale is going to differentiate us and really make us another benchmark within the region. And when we talk about eight centers, we're not even talking about Chicago. So, once this happens, once we're actually able to open doors to a medical center at affirmations, which is expected to happen in the fourth quarter of 2020, we will become the benchmark not only here in the state of Michigan but truly the Midwest. And I think that's very, very exciting for Ferndale, for affirmations, and for our community. So, definitely keep your eyes open, there's a lot more that's going to be announced first quarter of next year. And again, the expected grand opening will be the fourth quarter of next year, and we're probably going to be working very, very closely with people here in the city as we break ground and get ready to support the community. So, thank you for this time.
Thank you very much. Brian, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Brian Stowawi, 437 College Street. I just wanted to mention that I'm excited to start working with the LSA and the inclusive housing study. We have a group of people that want to get involved in that. We're kind of excited to see where that goes and what the recommendations are, and we'd like to give our input with the rest of the community as well. And then, I'd like to reiterate the, I know you mentioned it, but the ban on fracking, I think it's a very important step, and as Dave was saying earlier, the Ferndale has been a leader in the community and in the county, and I think we can put that draft together, I'd like to see it at next meeting, and we can pass that and be a leader in the community, and then maybe even at the county level, we can put out a ban on fracking as well for Oakland County, be a leader for the state. So, that was what I had tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mayor-elect Piana, welcome.
Hi, good evening, I'm Melanie Piana, 387 Wesleuston. I just wanted to say thank you tonight to Executive, I still call you Mayor, Executive Dave Coulter for attending tonight and supporting me, the nine years we served together on council, you're definitely missed, but I know that I'm supporting you in various ways through my professional channels. And I also wanted to say thank you tonight to outgoing council members, Julia Music and Dennis Whitey, stepping up in this definitely year of transition on leadership. I never doubted your abilities and your attentiveness to making sure the city moves forward. And also, I just wanted to say thank you to the voters of the city of Ferndale for having your confidence in me to serve as your mayor. Right now, I call this period from the election day to the actual sworn-in day, the onboarding period. Our city charter is unusual in that council members don't take their seat right away. And I just wanted to say that the city has been doing onboarding for our new council member, Laura Mikowski, Kat Bruner-James, and I'm attending as well, so that everybody's very familiar with the background of the departments and ready to take our seats and do the job that we've been elected to do with our current council members moving forward, Raylan Leaks-Me and Greg Pollaca. So, I just wanted to say I'm ready to jump in, I'm sad you're all leaving, but I know that you are going to be the thought leaders that you were before you even were appointed. So, I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you.
Thanks, Mel. Anyone else from the audience? All right, hearing that, I'll close call to the audience, and we'll move on to public hearings. And we have four public hearings tonight. The first is a consideration of the conditional rezoning of 705, 755 East Bennett Street. Justin?
Good evening. For the record, Justin Lyons, Planning Manager for the city, to take you through this first rezoning. So, this was a conditional rezoning that the Planning Commission considered in November. For those that aren't familiar, conditional rezonings are an opportunity where an applicant can volunteer certain conditions if they would like to rezone a parcel from one zoning district to another. It's a little bit different than a regular rezoning, it, there's a legal rezoning agreement that goes with that application, and so, that application is binding. The conditions that are part of it are, as I said, voluntarily offered by the applicant, so they are coming to the table with items that could limit the number of units of a project, could limit density and other factors, but they're not things that are considered variances. So, you'll see in this, you probably saw in this application that the applicant, one of the, two of the conditions were that they are going to potentially seek variances at the Board of Zoning Appeals if the approval from council moves forward. So, the applicant, Jerry LeBlanc, is proposing to expand an existing multifamily building at the corner of Fair Street and East Bennett Street, so one block north of Eight Mile, sort of near where the Canadian Railroad expansion happened and some existing commercial businesses that are along Eight Mile there. The site is zoned C2 general commercial, and the proposal is for it to be conditionally rezoned to R3, which allows for single and multiple-family residential. There's 10 units currently in the existing building, and the proposal is to add 10 more. The Planning Commission did consider this at a public hearing November 6th and did recommend approval of the rezoning site plan and parking reduction requests. We had a great discussion at that meeting and a previous meeting just about the nature of this area, and so, it is kind of strange that Eight Mile is zoned C2 commercial, and then this block is also zoned C2 commercial, but to the north, it transitions to residential. Just based on some of the history from the Planning Commissioners there, it was thought that, it was unclear back in 2008 or 2009... that, it was unclear back in 2008 or 2010 when this street was zoned C2, that, you know, it wasn't unclear on what the railroad's expansion plans in the future would be, if that was going to happen at all, and previous plans and development that were going on at that time. So, considering the changes in that district now, as well as just in transitional nature, if you look at our zoning map, we, the city does like to have a transition from commercial districts to single-family residential. And so, we felt that this particular parcel would be conforming if it rezone to R3 and then also would act as a good transition as things are less dense to the north. The site plan that was included in the packet has been reviewed by city staff, the Planning Commission engineer, and then the agreement was reviewed by the city attorney as well. So, as I said, there's one motion in the staff report. And then, you'll see the two conditions along with the conditional rezoning agreement. And those conditions limit, would require going to the Board of Zoning Appeals for the density requirement and then also for the dimensional variance for the building width. So, the, tonight's meeting was publicly noticed to the neighborhood around it, as well as the newspaper and outside in front of City Hall. Staff didn't receive any questions in advance of the meeting, but I'm happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Before we do that, does the developer want to?
I'm not sure if the applicant, okay, Jerry is here.
Want to speak?
Great.
Come on forward, and then we'll open the public hearing. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Jerry LeBlanc, and I am the president of the company that owns the property under consideration. And my architect unfortunately had to leave for a family issue, so he's not here. But I'm willing to answer any questions you may have or the public may have.
All right, well, thanks for being here. With that, I will open the public hearing at 7:52. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment on this?
Good evening, Brian Stowawi. I had a few questions on this property because it is, looks like it is getting a few exemptions along with upgrading from 10 units to 20 units. The maximum allowed by the Ferndale ordinance is only 16 units. So, there's going to be an additional exemption that this, I believe this applicant is going to apply for. So, one basic question is, when would this construction start and how long would it take? And then, would the residents, the tenants that are there now in this apartment building, would they be relocated or replaced during construction? And have they already been notified, which it sounds like they may have, but I just want to clarify that? And then, there was also an exception for the parking spaces. The required amount for Ferndale code is 32 spaces for a 20-unit building. And it looks like there's only 24. And I just want to know if there is a shared plan that was actually accepted and then what are the details of that? The trees, I just want to clarify and make sure that they are being preserved, replaced or expensed into the tree fund. And then, I got a few questions based on the price and the rent and the affordability of these units, since we are doing the inclusive housing and we're very close to trying to keep Ferndale affordable. What is the current approximate rent of the 10 units that are roughly 570 square feet? That's what it looks like. And then, what will be the rent price for the 20 units once this is demolished and reconstructed? And it looks like the units are roughly 1,050 square feet afterwards. I want to know if those are going to be of market rate or if they're going to be some type of affordable based on our ordinance or any other measure of affordability? And then, for sustainability, for environmental sustainability, do we have any kind of environmental impact analysis for this demo and reconstruction of the building? And will there be any sustainable materials or systems incorporated into the new apartment once it's constructed and finished? Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Anyone else from the audience? If not, I will close the public hearing at 7:55. And I don't know who wants to start addressing these questions.
I can answer probably the site plan-related questions and process questions.
Please, go ahead.
So, the question related to the parking reduction, so the Planning Commission has the ability by ordinance to consider, I think it's seven or eight factors when there is a request for a waiver of parking. The Planning Commission voted six to one in favor of that reduction request. So, the applicant was, is still considering providing a shared parking agreement with the church parking lot that's nearby, but based on factors of ability being closer, excuse me, availability of transit nearby, availability of on-street parking spaces, the size of the units, and a few others. The Planning Commission did recommend or approve the reduction for eight spaces. Regarding sustainable materials, I don't think that the applicant's gotten that far yet as far as specific building materials. But it's noted that if they are, if the applicant does tear up the existing asphalt parking lot and completely reconstruct that, then they would have to provide stormwater maintenance on-site. It's not in the current plan right now, but that would be something required if they did make that investment. Regarding the, I can't speak to the specific rents for this project. The Planning Commission did have some questions about rental rates at the meeting as well, at the public hearing as well. It's not something that the city could require under the current state statutes, but something that, you know, as staff and city council, we look at for future projects and hopefully pursuing that more after this study's complete.
What about the trees? What's the plan for the trees?
The trees are proposed to be protected. I believe there's a few trees that are going to be added to the site as well. So, just for folks not familiar, the, anytime that a project is going to propose to keep trees on-site, existing trees, that's what we prefer generally, they do have to provide a true protection plan that happens before any demolition can occur. The city also requires, has, as part of our good neighbor policy, for any demolition on-site, that our building officials review what materials are in the building and that, making sure that, you know, asbestos, if there was that, or any other sort of material like that, that is, you know, handled in a environmentally safe way. Happy to follow up on that as our building department's more familiar with those specific standards.
And sir, do you want to discuss your construction timeline?
Yes, so we don't have an exact date yet because obviously, we're still just even going through the approval process with the city. We have another meeting in January. We need to do some drill samples to figure out what the ground type is to determine what type of structure we need. So, all of these things must happen before we can even say what date we're going to start construction. On top of that, we have to get the bids and the financing and everything else in place. I would like to see construction start sometime next year, but I don't have an exact date as of yet.
And do you have a tentative plan for the residents there now?
Personally, I would like to see all the residents stay, but being with the construction that we're going to be doing, I'm not sure if it's going to be safe for them to be there while it's a construction zone. So, we'll have to look into, when we talk with the contractors, to see if that's a possibility or not. They are aware that we're looking into this, but no decision has been made as far as if we fully continue with the plan and what their situation would be if we did continue with the plan.
All right, thank you.
Through the chair. Whereas, I know that this probably has no bearing on this plan, but I personally would like to know, what are the rents of your, of the establishment? The 10 units and then the 10 more units with the proposed rates?
I can tell you that the average rates right now, as they stand now, are about 650 per unit, which is actually on the low side for Ferndale for these units. As far as what the rent would be when it's completed, has not been determined as of yet because it will also depend on what the rates are at the time it's done and what the final building layout and size of the apartments and things like that are. So, we don't have an exact number yet for future rent.
So, you plan for some of the apartments to be larger than the current ones?
Yes, because the second floor will be, the apartments on the second floor will be a bit larger than the ones on the first floor. In the current design, the top part will kind of overhang over the first floor a bit, providing a bit more square footage.
Thanks. Other questions from council?
Just one that was raised by Brian was regarding parking. Would there be adequate parking, you know, with the expansion?
The Planning Commission did feel so. And I think the applicant can speak to that if he, I don't think he would move forward to the plan without it, but I believe that you're still moving or considering the shared parking agreement with the adjacent property owners.
Yeah, so, we are, as of now, planning that we don't have to get additional parking. And also, our history shows that our makeup right now is that about only, out of the 10 units, I think we have a total of four people with cars. And that's been five years now where that's typically been the case. And a part of that's just because of the good transportation and options to get around where, for where the building's located. We are kind of taking an approach of, when we add these units, wait and see. And if we need more parking, we have had discussions with property owners nearby to secure that. And if it became an issue where we had to have it, then we would voluntarily seek out that parking for the benefit of our tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Through the chair, one more question. Are your, the 10 units all occupied right now?
We have one that is vacant at the moment.
Other questions from council?
I guess, one more, I guess, to Justin, maybe. Because the amount of units with the expansion, this does not trigger our housing affordability ordinance, is that right?
Correct. If it were seeking tax incentives or going through the planned unit development process, then it would.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the conditional rezoning of 705 to 755 East Bennett Street from C2 general commercial to R3, a single multifamily residential, with the following findings and subject to the following conditions after a public, within the packet, after a public hearing was held and set and published for this date in place.
Second.
Moved by Polica, supported by Music. Any discussion?
Through the chair, Your Honor. It may make sense for council to also direct that, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the conditional rezoning agreement that's in the packet.
Move to amend my motion to include that.
Do you accept the amendment?
Yes.
Okay. Amendment's accepted. Other discussion? Thanks, Dan.
This is an area of Ferndale that has not really, has kind of gone neglected for a long time. All of a sudden, we have a bunch of new businesses who have moved in and fixed up their, their part of the neighborhood. Some of the homes have followed suit, so it's nice to see this particular apartment building really come to life. I definitely see lots of people walking their pets over there when I drive by in the morning. So, I'm very happy to see that this area of Ferndale has been so neglected for so long and is starting to really come about. Thank you.
Thanks. Other discussion? I will say, as representative in the Planning Commission, there was broad support for this after discussion. All right, if not, Marnie, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Whitey?
No.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor President Polica?
Yes.
And Mayor Coulter.
Who?
Excuse me. Mayor Martin.
Yes.
That other guy.
Motion passes. Well, next public hearing then is 6B. The consideration of the mixed-use districts, Article 5, commercial and office districts, Article 4, architectural compatibility, Section 24 to 184, zoning ordinance amendments.
That is mouthful.
It is.
So, yeah, I'm happy to talk through, you know, a lot of layers to this ordinance. It may look on the surface, but a lot of it is really just building momentum from some of the other ordinance amendments that we've passed since the master plan has moved forward. So, as you might remember, earlier this month, we did have a public hearing for the access management ordinance. And initially, when we started this whole process, we were working on those at the same time, being that they're related and have to do with just making sure that we are designing a city that is walkable and accessible for everyone. And so, those ordinances were connected, but it did, as I think Mayor Martin can attest to, those, some of those planning commission meetings were pretty technical in nature. And I definitely thought it was better to divide some of those ordinances. And I think that was the smart choice by the commission. So, I'll just give you a brief overview and then happy to talk through any questions and just note that this was a public hearing noticed. And we've had a few public hearings on this particular, these particular ordinances. So, the goal was really to look at the mixed-use districts. And if you're looking at a zoning map, those are MXD 1 and 2, to incorporate a lot of the form-based design approaches that we tackled last year with the central business district updates. With that in mind, we were looking at sustainability, accessibility, walkability, safety, and just overall best practices. You know, I think the commission and staff and council had, you know, seen some site plans from new development that, you know, while interesting, exciting, didn't always have the, all the design principles that we hoped for and felt fit the character of Ferndale. And I think in particular, in the mixed-use districts, you know, while they were put in forth, I think in 2008, 2010, and I think that some good things have came out of that, there was a lot of open-endedness when we would see site plans because the zoning ordinance was pretty open. And so, we wanted to kind of guide things a little bit more to make sure that things fit within the character of those districts. So, I just won't read all through all of these, but really, in the master plan update from a few years ago in the land use section, we talked a lot about design standards and guidelines for commercial corridors, just like mixed-use in downtown. And then, specifically calling out the mixed-use districts as areas where we want to continue that walkability. And then, also, this is referenced in the strategic plan in the economic prosperity and strategic regional partnerships sections of the plan. So, this is just, and apologize if the screen is a little bit washed out. But we started this conversation in November 14th of 2018 with a discussion at the Planning Commission, had another discussion in February when we were able to react to some of the feedback we received, and third discussion back in May of this year. And then, finally, a public hearing in mid-August at the Planning Commission. And then, here we are today at city council. So, as I said, really focused on the mixed-use districts. And then, we took a look at the central business district, and you'll see what I mean in a minute, in that generally, I think, you know, we were pretty happy with the form-based code that was updated last year. But all of the specific definitions and rules of measurement for some of these architectural terms and standards were all in the central business district section. So, as we updated the industrial districts earlier this year and moved on to work on this ordinance, we said, well, if you're designing a project or if you're planning commission or a staff person reviewing a plan, maybe it makes more sense to be in the architectural compatibility and standards section of the ordinance. So, everything is there when you're looking at building materials and all of these different standards. So, we felt like it was a good move to consolidate in that section. And then, our next step where we can move forward would be also come up with a document that goes along with these new regulations that sort of demonstrates and visualizes outside of the ordinance, how all of these different regulations work and then are also flexible for the future outside of the ordinance. So, on the right side, we tried to just do an image of what's the existing mixed-use ordinances versus what's proposed. As you can see, the red areas are really where the mixed-use ordinances, those were the limits of what the regulations were. So, I think they were, it was a good start because I think it did jumpstart some things in some of those areas of the city. But the regulations were pretty minimal. So, we wanted to take a, relook at some of those setbacks and make sure that we're not having parking in the front yard. We wanted to make sure that, at the rear of the property where there's a lot of residential behind these districts, making sure that there are appropriate setbacks from the rear of those sites, whereas the current ordinance there was, was not really a rear setback. So, that really just meant more, better citing and design standards that are in those regulations rather than being so open. rather than being so open-ended. We also brought over the articulation requirements. So we want buildings that are not just flat-faced and just sort of a, you know, shoebox-type shape. We wanted things that are a little bit more articulated. We wanted to make sure that we're requiring some private open area for these new buildings and just continue the walks, excuse me, the walkable nature and pedestrian-oriented design that we've had. So I said that, you know, we moved a lot of things from the central business district section of the ordinance that apply to other districts now. They are now moved to the architectural compatibility section of the ordinance. And so that really previously just had, so you'll see on the next slide, really, on the left-hand side, obviously not going to read all of these, but this was sort of the extent of how building materials were governed and articulation. There wasn't a whole lot there. So what we did was make sure that things are a bit more defined, because we have a little bit higher standard in how we want buildings designed now. And so this is just sort of a snapshot, the packet for this section of the, or, excuse me, this section of the packet is quite long. But we wanted to make sure that we're designing storefronts and things that are pedestrian-friendly in this new section, or new portion of the ordinance. We've talked, and I think Mayor Martin can attest to this as well, we've talked a lot about building materials, and we're pretty fortunate to have some people with a good eye for design and architects on the planning commission. But we do end up talking about materials a lot, and so we kept running into, there's really only two, there were really only two sentences that governed building materials in this section of the ordinance, and it really wasn't enough. You can see the first and second bullet are really what was in the ordinance. And so now we're saying, you know, by building type, we would like to have still flexibility. We don't want to be overly prescriptive on how we're telling people these materials, because materials can change depending on certain trends in different parts of town. But we wanted to make sure that we're dividing a building sort of up into the building base and the upper level and making sure that we're applying percentages of how many, or how much of these different materials that we want. So rather than just having an all-metal building, this ordinance would make sure that you're having some variety. So you may have a base that is, you know, has some masonry and some brick, and that's the majority material there, but limiting, you know, some of that metal to being just a secondary material there. So getting more of the variety that I think that we're looking for. And then what this looks like is the next step. So these are just some example images of what could be in a design guideline. And design guidelines have been talked about by the DDA for quite a long time and by the planning commission. And they're really meant to give people a visualization of, these are examples of buildings and designs that we want in our community. So we haven't went into too much detail on these yet, just really starting on it. But this is meant to be some, a document that's outside of the ordinance that gives people a how-to of what this ordinance means. And so, you know, that's just an example image. It doesn't mean it's going to be exactly in our community, but it does have a good variety of materials, has some upper-level setbacks. And so the goal would be to, at some point next year, come back with a document that we can give to architects and other people designing buildings and say, you know, this is what we expect in Ferndale, and here's what the ordinance requires. So it's a very short summary of sort of where we're at after all those meetings, but...
No, it's all good. All right, before we go to council, I will open the public hearing at 8:14 PM. Is there anybody from the audience that would like to comment on this? Hearing none. I will close the public hearing at 8:14 and 20 seconds PM. Questions from council?
No questions.
I have comments. I don't have any questions. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
If no one objects, I'm going to put all three motions together.
I don't. Is that illegal?
Yeah, I asked Dan.
Okay, then we're good.
We may, Your Honor. Let's see if they support.
Okay.
I move to approve the amendments to Article 5, mixed-use districts, with the following findings after a public hearing was set. Let me rephrase that. I move to approve the amendments to Article 5, mixed-use districts, as well as the amendments to Article 4, commercial and office districts, Sections 25-69 through 24-69 to 2472, and to Article 4, general provisions, Section 24-184, with the following findings as presented in the packet after a public hearing was held and set and published for this date and place.
Support.
Moved by Polica, supported by Whitey. Comments? I'll start out. This is just a terrific piece of work and really detailed and well-done. And if you ever want an expression of really great government, watch our planning commission at work at something like this, because we have a tremendously, I always talk about how great the staff is, and you guys are fantastic. But our planning commission is so well-versed and educated on these topics and contribute significantly and willingly when it gets down into this and the minutia of this, that I just, I can't speak enough compliments towards Chairwoman Baker and the planning commission. And so between the efforts of staff and the planning commission, I think this is really well-done.
Thank you. I'll relay that to the commission.
I'll be there, too.
Through the chair, I agree. We're very fortunate to have some really, really, not only talented individuals on the planning commission, but very well-educated urban planners and architects. It's fortunate that we're not just having, you know, the average, common, everyday person that doesn't really understand the complexity of code. So we're very, very fortunate. And I think this is great. I know it took a long time to get here, but it really aligns with the direction that council has been going over the last several years.
Any other comments?
I just wanted to also commend the staff as well as the planning commission. I did sit through some of those meetings, not all of them. I find this stuff extremely complicated. I have to read and reread and all this, and they seem to just, you know, right off the top of their head, and they've got specific pointed questions. You did say it was a shorter presentation, but there was so much work. And anybody who looks at that packet that's uploaded that anybody can look at, you can tell the amount of work that went into this. So I appreciate it for, not only you, your staff, the city staff, but planning commission as well.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
If I could just add, I wanted to thank Smith Group. Kathleen Duffy from Smith Group also had a, played a big role, assisting staff in the commission and helped guiding with a lot of the architectural terms. They're a great resource that was very helpful for this and the access management ordinance as well.
Sounds great. All right, with that, Sherilyn, will you call the roll?
Sure. Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor for San Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Our third public hearing is consideration to amend Brownfield Plan for 221 West Troy, also known as the Development on Troy, or the DOT. Jordan?
Mayor, council, I'm Derek Delacorte. I thought it would land a lot better than that. But thank you very much for your time this evening. I'll be brief with this. There's details in the packet. I can certainly go as deep into questions as council or the public or anyone else in the room has. But in sum, generally what this is, this is a request to take funds from the Ferndale-Brownfield Revolving Loan Fund, which exists and is a repository for funds captured from Brownfield projects. So for those who aren't familiar with Brownfield, I'm going to take a step back and just kind of explain just very briefly a 101 on how this works. Brownfield projects, which the city has about 20 of those, that have been put in place since the early 2000s. Brownfield tax credits are, I'm sorry, Brownfield tax incentives are a tool that are meant to support the remediation of contaminated sites, the rehabilitation of old buildings, and generally just to incentivize development in built-out communities, if you will. It was something that was introduced during the recession as a tool to kind of breathe new life into old buildings. And so the DOT being a Brownfield project, what we're asking for is to take up to $40,000 from the revolving fund, which exists with funds from those projects. As they have paid off and as those incentives burn away, there are resources available for projects for other Brownfield-eligible activities. And there's a public act at the state level called Act 381 of 1996 that governs what is eligible under the Brownfield statute. So that's a very long-winded way of saying there are certain things that you can fund with this stuff, and there are certain things that you can't. And that latter list is much longer. So these activities that we're proposing to fund with this contribution are to fulfill a commitment for the DOT, to make it a sustainable project as much as possible. We're going for what's called the ParkSmart certification. It's an equivalent of LEED. LEED does not certify parking decks, but they have these standards, because they focus more on neighborhoods and commercial buildings. And so they have this tool to certify and help you measure making a sustainable building. And one of the things that we're trying to do with the DOT is to provide solar infrastructure. So what this request would fund is the inclusion of, think of, and I'm being a little bit crass to try to avoid some jargon, but think of sort of the conduit and the infrastructure that you would need to plug in your solar panel. That's what this would put in there is if, for those that are geeks like me and thumbed through the packet, you'll see at each level of the deck in blue squiggly lines, that's where they talk about putting some of this infrastructure. So you're seeing, you're seeing infrastructure that will support the installation of these panels at a future date. And I say that because what we would do is we would provide the panels as we're able to find funding for them. So I'll be working very closely with the environmental sustainability planner and the rest of my staff to find grant funding and other resources to put those panels in. But the time to have the infrastructure is now, while you're building the deck. So otherwise, it's much more costly to go and retrofit. And given that sustainability was a goal of the project from the outset, we worked very closely with Colasanti, the contractors, WGI, the engineers, to spec this out and so create the specs, find out how much it would cost. And that was sort of months of engagement with the engineers to really kind of tease this out and get exactly what we needed, which is detailed specs, as you'll find in that packet. So they're essentially engineering drawings to show somebody how to put this stuff in. So the contribution here would not, it's important to note, just to kind of close out on this, this contribution would not extend the length of time of the project. It would not, it would not increase the costs, and it would not jeopardize any of the other elements that we're committed to. So this is, this is an add-on over and above, using Brownfield funds that exist for this purpose to support this cost, so that the general fund doesn't have to absorb it. So that's, at a high level, an overview there. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about this.
Okay, before we go there, I'll open the public hearing at 8:22. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this?
Thank you. Would this benefit the parking structure itself or all the units you gave to the developer for a buck a shot? Who's this, who's this going to benefit?
Thank you. Now, we're going to go through the public hearing, then you can answer. Thanks. Brian?
Good evening again. Just for the record, what is the total cost? You said $40,000, but what is the total cost of the quote that we got from the engineers or the developer, whoever gave us that quote? Just like that for the record. And then we said we would find money later on to fund these solar panels. I'm wondering if there's a timeline on that, if it's going to be 10 years that we're going to finally get all the solar panels, or if it's going to be maybe two years, one year? I'd like a little more clarity on what the timing is for the solar panels, for the sustainability element. And then there was a change order on page 19 of the packet that's marked up, that looks like it was, maybe they overquoted, and it says, it's got some blue arrows that say like, hey, look, this price doesn't make sense. I wonder if that was incorporated in the total cost or if we just paid it anyway? Those are my questions.
Thanks. Anybody else from the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Jordan, do you want to go through some of those?
Absolutely. I'll start with the ownership question in terms of who it'll benefit. These solar panels and the conduit that we're asking to install now would be publicly owned. So that would be our infrastructure. We're using our resources for it, so it would be public infrastructure. It may benefit the whole building, but at the end of the day, we would control access to that resource, and it would be ours. So that's the, that would be that piece. To the exact cost, I don't know why I thought this was my mouse, I apologize. The exact cost quoted, and this was a final cost from the, and I know, and I apologize, the packet might be a little confusing, because it sits everything in there, including some of the notes leading up to the final price. The final price for the work was $35,827.77. I asked, I asked council to allow up to $40,000. That would be about a 14% contingency, which is roughly industry standard. Usually, when you're planning a project of any size involving construction, you want to give yourself 10 to, in extreme cases, 20%, but mostly it's 10 to 15%. So this is just for any sort of unforeseen circumstance, you know, you're installing it, something breaks, and you have to reorder a part, or Murphy's Law could strike in any time. And so a reasonable contingency is about 10 to 15%. This is 14%.
Through the chair, I would speak to the project budget as to the solar panels. In the beginning of the project, we did issue what are called construction bulletins, which are just pricing bulletins for the solar panels. And the cost range was between $350,000 to $500,000 to fit the entire array, which is why it was stricken from the budget, we just didn't have the money for it. So to Jordan's point, this is very much a proactive measure. We want, it's best to make it solar-ready now before construction is built. And I would add one more comment to Jordan's rationale why, the actual, the majority of these costs are related to the actual reengineering of the structure to support the load of a future solar array. So we've already done the engineering and the specs around what that load would be and how it would be distributed across the structure.
What about the timeframe for this, for the sellers?
That, excuse me, the timeframe really does depend on city council in terms of the budget process. Initially, the only funding that we would have available for would be any cash reserves that would be uncommitted from the parking fund and/or any outside funding that Jordan had spoke of before. So we certainly recognize that it's a priority in terms of sustainability for the, for the structure itself and from city council's goals, and we would include that in like any other city-wide sustainability goals.
So it's setting us up for future action to do this?
Absolutely, yep.
And then what about the markups on the bill or the page there?
That was, through the chair, that was, I think, what Joe was speaking to and some of the, some of the pre-work that was done in terms of engineering.
I see, I'm sorry.
But, and just, just for clarity's sake, the price for this project would be that
Thank you. Questions from council? And I'll start off, I just have one, but I think you already spoke to most of it. So you're asking up to $40,000. That doesn't appear in the packet, it's the $35,827, correct? But your ask is for the, with the 14% contingency up to $40,000?
Yes, Mayor, yes.
Okay, I guess I would just mention, whoever makes the motion, if we should, we could, we need to put in the motion up to $40,000. Because, right, that's different than what's conflicting than what's in the back end, so...
Thank you.
Questions from council? Any others?
Through the chair, I think. Jordan, can you remind us of what the estimated timeline was at the beginning for the structure and how they're currently running?
In terms of the overall project? I would defer to Joe to that, just because he's been sort of the champion of the project at this point and the closest to the Colasanti process.
Yeah, sure. The project timeline has always been 12 to 15 months, and we're currently on track. The city began dismantling the site in February of last year. Construction and excavation actually began in March. At this time, we're looking to open the street and the structure by June, which would put us within the timeline that we committed to.
Thank you.
Through the chair? A number of people have contacted me saying they don't understand why it's going to cost so much for these solar panels to be installed. And I've tried to relate to them that it's not like what you would put on the roof of your house. We're looking more at industrial panels that we have, for example, out back under the police department's carport.
That's correct.
Other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
With that being said, I move that the Ferndale-Brownfield redevelopment authority approve the amendment to the Brownfield Plan at 221 West Troy, AKA the DOT, as presented by the CED Director, up to the amount not to exceed $40,000.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Support.
Moved by Leaks May, supported by Polica. Any discussion?
I just want to add that this is something that I actually wanted part of the project. When we first talked about building a parking structure, one of my requirements was that it was self-sustaining. And it was really, really hard for me to support the project when we had to pull this out. But I understood that the structure is something that's going to be a benefit for the community. So, yeah, I might not have gotten everything that I wanted when we first approved it, but I'm glad that we are now on track, that we can now support a building that's going to be much more sustainable.
I agree 100%. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I would like to say, over the last four months, I've become very familiar with retrofitting and the cost of retrofitting. So I really appreciate that we're not looking back on this five years from now and we're taking actions now, seeing the cost of retrofitting is kind of mind-blowing. So I think this is a very good preventative step to saving a lot of money later.
Anyone else? With that, Marnie, we call the roll.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Motion passes. Thanks, Jordan. Next, we have public hearing to request to amend the Brownfield Plan 5B for 981 East Saratoga. Is that you?
Hi again, yes. So this one's a, a little more straightforward. So this is an older Brownfield plan and, and this request for the amendment has come from the applicant, Chris Johnston. This project was originally approved by the Brownfield Authority and City Council back in 2014 for a 23-year period and a total support amount of just under $219,000. The support was to be issued in the form of a grant from the Ferndale Brownfield Authorities, locals, it had a longer name back then, Local Site Remediation Revolving Fund. And so essentially, in an amount not to exceed $219,000. To date, just about $134,000 has been dispersed and that's, the last disbursement was fiscal year 2015 and tax year 2014. And that, there's approximately 85,000 remaining in eligible expenses that could be invoiced for. The owner has asked, the amendment is essentially of a technical nature. Originally, when this project was approved, and we take these approvals very literally, so the scope that's laid out in the project, whatever the Brownfield Authority approves and then council approves, that's the scope you have to deliver. That's what's tied to your incentives. And this scope was very specific in, in having three specific uses. So it was a brewery and distillery with a tasting room, an event company managing events in the space, as well as off-site concerts and festivals, and then a group rental space and a flexible group office area. So, and in the packet, you'll see where I cited that in the plan and you kind of say, I save people the trouble of trying to dig that through the text. What the applicant has asked, looking at sort of the, the fluidity in, in the brewing and distilling space as an industry, as well as the applicant's own economic conditions and, and personal professional priorities, has asked for flexibility in not being restricted to having to deliver all three of those uses at the same time. So what the amendment is, that is being requested is to say it can be any one or a combination of those. And so right now, the applicant has expressed an interest in going forward with the events and the event company, but holding off on the brewing and distilling. So the applicant, Mr. Johnson, has asked for that flexibility. The Brownfield Authority, this October, their special meeting did approve that amendment. And so that is what the next step in the process, much like the last item, once the Brownfield Authority acts, it comes before council. And so that's what, that's what, what is before you today.
Great. Is Chris here?
Does he want to say anything?
He was unable to be here this evening.
Okay. Fair enough. With that, I will open the public hearing at 8:33 PM. Anyone from the public? All right, we'll close the public hearing and questions from council? Or I'll take a motion.
Before the motion, Your Honor, if I could, Jordan, there's a reference to a proposed condition regarding the first year. Did you wish that to be included as part of the motion?
Thank you, Dan. I apologize. The, the Brownfield Authority, speaking of, of commissions and boards with a lot of talent and expertise, the Brownfield Authority is similarly blessed to the Planning Commission. And one of the members had introduced a condition proposing that we modify the first year of capture for this project and move it to 2019. And the reason for that, and this is a bit technical, but essentially what Act 381 allows you to do, when a project that gets approved, it has a certain timeframe through which they can collect their reimbursement. So that, so a developer kind of takes some risk and says, if my project performs within the years that I've been given, I can get reimbursed. If, if I don't get my money or whatever happens, once that time cuts off, the project is over. And what happens by state law, as long as the plan in total, including these five years that I'm about to talk about, is not more than 30 years, the Brownfield Revolving Fund can capture revenues to be used for future projects. So the Brownfield Authority, looking at this and seeing that there were still eligible activities, offered a condition that upon the review and affirmation of the Finance Director, we would modify the first year of capture. And, and upon that review and what that would do, we, I've worked with Cheryl on this and we've, we've committed to getting that review done by the end of the calendar year. There's tax implications for that. And so what we would do is recommend, we would provide a review on that, make sure that there is no detriment to, to whether the general fund or to the Brownfield Fund by modifying that first year. And we would issue that recommendation to council and, and essentially the condition that the Brownfield Authority recommended was give the Finance Director that opportunity to take a look, closer look at the books and, and see if there'd be an advantage to the city for modifying that year. Thank you, Dan, for pointing that out. I apologize for leaving that off the overview. It is in the packet though.
Thanks. Question or a motion?
I move to approve the amendment to the Brownfield Plan for 981 East Saratoga. With the condition that the first year of TIF capture be amended to 2019 upon the review and concurrence of the Finance Director, which would be conducted by or before December 31st, 2019. Support.
Moved by Pollica, supported by Whitey. Any discussion? Hearing none. Marnie, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we move to the consent agenda. The consent agenda, our items that are considered, capable of being considered in one motion. And I will read the consent agenda now, less the items already removed. 7A, approval of the November 25th, 2019, regular meeting minutes. 7B, approval of the updates to the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 8, Environmental Sustainability Commission, as submitted by the Sustainability Planner. The new 7C is consideration to pay Siemens Company for emergency boiler repairs, Fire Station 1 Boiler System, in the amount of $4,791 from the listed account. 7D is approval of roads incorporated purchase order in the amount of $12,000 charged to the General Fund motor pool, repair and maintenance in the account that's listed. 7E is approval of payment to Siemens for emergency repairs to the Kulik Center Boiler in the amount of $21,305.48 charged to General Fund, Public Service Department, Repair and Maintenance, account number listed. 7F is approval to execute the 2019 Build Institute Ferndale Activities Programming, including a Build Basics Cohort and a Ferndale Soup Event in the amount of $5,000, charged to Community Programs, the account number listed in the agenda. 7G, approval of the Michigan Department of Natural Resources Community Forestry Grant Program Award of $3,700 for the Department of Public Works Urban Forestry Training and Authorization of the Finance Director to sign the grant agreements as submitted by the Sustainability Planner. 7H, approval to adopt the 2020 City Meeting Schedule and Calendar as submitted by the City Clerk. 7I, approval of a resolution to establish a program related to seasonal accessory buildings in the Central Business District as submitted by the Community and Economic Development Corporation, Director, sorry. 7J, approval to create and fill the new CSR3 position for Information Services Coordinator, providing information and customer service to the Water Department and billing customers. 7K is the approval to the reappointment of Jennifer Bentley of the Ferndale Housing Commission for the five-year term ending May 1st, 2024. And 7L is approval of, of the bills and payrolls as submitted by the City Manager's Office, subject to review by the Council Finance Committee. Before we move to council, is there anyone from the audience that wishes to comment or speak to the consent agenda?
Evelyn Elster Westryton, I have to take issue with 7B, Section 2-136. They have two members, non-resident property owners on the Environmental Sustainability Commission. I fail to see how they could be or would improve our environmental sustainability but be detrimental due to financial interests only.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, is there any questions about the consent agenda from council? Or a motion?
I would move that we approve the, all the items on the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
Moved by Whitey, supported by Leaks May. Any other discussion? I will just make a discussion to say that comment. It doesn't bother me that we allow non-residents on our commissions. We, and many number of commissions have allowed non-residents. And I don't think you have to be a landowner to be concerned about the environmental sustainability of the city. So I, I take no issue with that as part of the conditions, but I appreciate your comments. Thank you. Marnie, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Consent agenda passes. The regular agenda, item 8A, is consideration to appoint Ann Naggs to the Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission. And I'll introduce this. Ann is a former member of this commission, back when it was functional 10 years ago. I told you I'd have more folks coming forward. She is a triple amputee and very aware of the opportunities that we have within the city. And I very much value her, her, her participation and feedback on this commission. So I didn't see her here, so I don't think she, no, I don't think she is. So I'd ask your support to appoint Ann to the commission, please.
I move to appoint Ann Naggs to the Accessibility and Inclusion Advisory Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2022.
Support.
Moved by Pollica, supported by Leaks May. Any discussion?
No, I just concur with your comments about Ann. She's a wonderful woman. And she was very, very, she provided a lot of valuable information when she was a part of the commission 10 years ago.
I agree. Thank you. Any other discussion?
None. I just hope to meet her.
You will. Marnie, call the roll, please.
Mayor Potam Pollica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Next, regular agenda item is 8B, consideration to appoint Michael Flores to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission. That's me as well. I'll have Michael come up and introduce himself here, but I think many are familiar with him from the last election cycle. And this moves into the realm of wanting to continue to stay involved and engage more in the community. And I think Michael's got a skill set that will help move the Arts Commission agenda, which has been very active lately, forward. So I welcome his participation. Michael, do you want to say a few words?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your consideration, for this appointment and for the opportunity to serve our community. Living in Ferndale for a decade, I've served our community in different capacities. And this appointment will allow me to continue with this tradition of service and continue the work Ferndale residents have asked from me, to stay involved in city government. After the 2019 election, many on current council, the council-elect, the candidates and residents congratulated me on my positive message and attitude and encouraged me to stay involved regardless of the results. I promise to continue my positive approach to solving problems and focus on tangible results. I hope I make Ferndale residents proud of the service I will provide if appointed to this commission. As a side note, I believe that Mayor Dan Martin served on the Arts and Culture Commission years ago.
Yep.
Thank you for your support, your guidance, your accessibility. And one day, I too hope to follow your footsteps to council. Thank you. Gracias for this opportunity to be considered.
Thank you, Michael. Questions for council or a motion, please?
I have a question.
Address them through the chair, though, please.
Oh, sorry, through the chair. I just was wondering, what was the catalyst for choosing this commission over others?
Yeah, good question. So I should have considered several commissions, but as you may know, I am leading the partnership between affirmations in Corktown, which I believe is going to take a lot of my time. With this particular commission, I believe that I bring forward some background and I will be able to leverage some relationships that I currently have with the DIA, with the DSO, and with the Michigan Opera House, to hopefully see if there are synergies to enhance a lot of the work that's currently being done with, with Arts and Culture. So I'm hoping to be able to leverage those relationships, those contacts, to benefit the Arts Commission. I think that some of the other commissions would have required me a steeper learning curve. And here, I wanted to leverage kind of a more knowledge before I engage in some of the other commissions that I was interested in.
Thank you.
Thanks. Other questions or a motion, please?
With that being said, I move that we appoint, to confirm the appointment of Michael Flores to the Ferndale Arts and Culture Commission for a term ending December 31st, 2021.
Support.
Moved by Leaks May, supported by Music. Discussion?
Just one item, just because a lot of the candidates who ran and those of us not successful are all starting to get involved in different various commissions. I believe you're the first one to actually step up to seek the appointment, so I gladly support this. And I've already expressed to you my support online and then through messaging as well. So I look forward to your service on this commission.
I, I think this is a very nice way to round out all the activities. You definitely picked the more fun commission to serve on. But I know that the partnership with Corktown is extremely important and so this will be a nice way for you to enjoy some of your time in Ferndale without the stress of everything else that comes with it.
As Michael mentioned, I'm very nostalgic about the Arts Commission. That was my first volunteer commission and it's a slippery slope from there. And, and, you know, it was defunct for a while and really has been rejuvenated and there's some great leadership and some great synergies going on there. So I think you'll find it very fulfilling and I really appreciate your willingness to serve. Thank you. Marnie, call the roll?
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Potam Pollica?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Welcome to the Arts Commission. Thanks. Next is consideration of the MLCC Local Government Agreement for an off-premise consumption permit at 395 to 399 West Marshall Street.
Thank you. Again, for the record, Justin Lyons, Planning Manager for the city. Just wanted to introduce property owner for, and applicant, James Barber and his wife, Denise, are here. And so they've been talking with staff and the Planning Commission about a number of different ideas. But being that the business, and I'm sure James will want to get into it further and explain the history, but this building at Marshall Street has been in their family for many years and was previously run as a, as a market. And so in talking with the Barbers, they had mentioned that, you know, they'd really like to see that building reopen with this market idea. And so talked about various different ways for that to operate and being that it's, that was the historic use there, the Laos, the, the use is allowed to continue to move forward from a zoning perspective. But the Barbers, they do run a winery in Grass Lake, Michigan, and wanted to bring some of that product to, to Ferndale and wanted to offer, you know, onsite filling of, of beer and then also offer their wine for sale. And so in talking about the various legalities of that, the MLCC, their recommendation was the application before you for a, it says an on-premise tasting room, because there's not a separate license and application for the business proposed. And so from a zoning perspective, you know, we, we talked about a number of different avenues and ways to go. From a zoning perspective, we would not approve, you know, a business that had seating there without going to the Planning Commission and seeking approval of parking reductions and variances and stuff like that. And we did pursue that route at one point and that, that was not able to move forward. So this different proposal would not allow for any seating or any tables, anything like[1774.91] would not allow for any seating, or any tables, anything like that, any onsite consumption through our certificate of occupancy process. And so staff wanted to bring forward this option. And in the packet, it's included some more details about the business plan. But I'm sure Mr. Barber here would probably like to talk more and answer any questions that council might have.
Sounds great. James, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Thanks for hearing me tonight. So this building has been in my family since 1926. My grandfather built it. He had a, there was a meat market in the center store. His was a produce. Back in the day, that was a supermarket. If you're familiar with Ferndale, you have Ken's Market on Fielding, you had Wide Awake, you had Ardmore Market. These were all a way to distribute food before the supermarkets came in here. So my mother took it over. I was just a little kid, so it had to be back in 56, 58. She kept it until, almost until she died. She died in 2012. I inherited the building. In order to sell beer and wine there, like, you know, Bells and Shorts and all the rest, Budweiser, I would need an SDM license. And the store had beer and wine forever. She sold meats and, you know, chicken and everything you can imagine. Those SDM licenses now are, they'll be no more issued in Oakland County. There are 14 in escrow where people have, gas stations have gone under business where they sold beer and wine. They kept those active. It's only $70 a year to keep it in escrow. They're $110,000 for me to buy one. If I have a manufacturing license, which I have in Grass Lake for beer and wine, I can sell it right there as carryout. I don't need to buy an SDM license. It will be all my own product. I would love to see that store service that community again. I called my daughter, who lives in Ann Arbor, to give you an idea of how I feel about this. I said, Rachel, what do you, what do you cook at night? What do you do? Because she's a single, a single female. She said, Dad, I don't cook. I go to the best restaurant I can go to. I get a carryout. I go right home. I get right on my computer. I continue to work and I eat. She goes, it's not like it was when you were my age, Dad. It's nothing like that anymore at all. I looked at the community around that store within 300 yards. It's everybody like my daughter. I would love to take Zingerman's bread in there, take honey baked hams, make sandwiches to take out. They can come and fill their growler of beer or buy a bottle of wine. I'd like to serve that community. I'm not looking at cigarettes and pop and eggs and milk and all that stuff. This is going to be things that the neighborhood wants and suggests me to produce for them. So if they come in there and they want a particular, I know that there's a guy in Ferndale that who roasts coffee beans. I would love to have that stuff in my building that would serve the community. They can walk there. They can ride their bike there. I'm not looking to bring in Royal Oak and Troy in Birmingham. I want to feed the community and serve the community where that's, that building exists.
All right. Thanks, James. Before we turn it over to council, is there anyone from the audience that would like to, you were done, right? Okay. Anybody from the audience that would like to speak on this? Okay, hearing none. Questions from council?
So I do have a, a comment. I love the idea of what you presented as far as the, kind of the mom and pop shop, kind of the shop that everybody kind of needs. If you are on the go a lot and you just want a bite to eat, just kind of come and grab it. But I do want to ask you, and this is just curiosity on my, just from my standpoint, how does one, how do you go about brewing your own beer and just selling? How do you go about that? What's that process?
Well, there's several ways to brew. One is called all grain, where you put the crushed grain into a vat at 152 degrees. It steeps in there for 90 minutes. You drain off that water, which is now called wort. It's extracted the malts out of the grain. Another method is, is called dry malt extracted brewing. They've already done that for me. The malt comes in a bag as in a form of powder. And you just simply put that in the water and add your hops. And pros and home brewers have the most difficult time telling which ones which. That's a big argument out there in the world. It's very easy to make beer. It's very simple. And the majority of the beer would be made in Grass Lake at my brewery and then brought to Ferndale.
So just to clarify in my mind, and maybe it's not the right place. I didn't grow up here, but I have many friends who are lifelong residents, and they talk about the candy store. That's a store you're mom, yeah.
K's.
Yeah. There's a lot of fond memories in the community about that store. What was that? Tootsie. That's right.
Mayor, could I ask a question?
Please.
Through the chair. The, the permit that's required from the MLCC is actually an on-premise tasting room permit. But is it accurate, your intent is for this to allow for you to sell for off-premises consumption?
That's right. So MLCC has their own little boxes to check, right? If I chose just to brew beer and sell it to Dino's or Como's, I wouldn't have to go through this because the public would not enter my building where I brew. That simple onsite premises tasting is just their way of making sure that the public can come in, that we no sit down drinking, and there'll be no, none of that. We've, I think the attorney and Justin have talked about it for quite some time. That's simply something they have to have. They don't care if you let me have sit down drinking or not. They don't, they couldn't care less. This is a part of their form and their application that would allow the public to walk in the building. That's basically all that is.
I have a question through the chair, if I may. I looked at your, your site plan sketch, and there's no restroom. Is there plans for a restroom?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, there, there's three restrooms. Each, each unit has a restroom. If I didn't put that in there, I apologize.
Thank you.
Good catch.
Any comments?
We're in questions. Quit. All right, now I'd like a motion.
I would move to, oh, sorry.
No, 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 hang on. Question?
So, yeah, I, what's from stopping, you're gonna, if it's disapproved, you'll get a license for onsite consumption. I mean,
No.
A permit, I'm sorry. Well, that's what you're applying for.
That's through the state?
Yeah.
Yes, the state of Michigan.
But it'll, the, the certificate will say that you are allowed to taste at your facility. We're only going by your word that you're not going to allow that.
Well, that's true. I, I, I mean, that's, that's basically true. But I have no seating. I have no arrangements for seating. I have no, anything like that.
I, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for, for me. So.
I would move that we approve the MLCC Local Government Approval Form for an off-premise consumption permit at 395 to 399 West Marshall Street, as submitted.
Support.
Moved by Whitey, supported by Leaks May. Now, discussion?
For me, I used to walk by that store in the 90s. When I came home from Ferndale High School, I had to walk all over the east side of town. So it was Marshall Fielding. And Marshall is one of the things. I'm really glad to see that building. It's good structure.
Yeah.
It's good to see some life come back in. Also, I wanted to point out that with this project, one of the neighbors actually sent us an email up to the council to, in support, stating that they definitely wanted this. So
Well, that's great.
That's good support.
I think it's going to be a great thing for the community. I really, really do. My heart's really in it.
It'd be great.
Yeah, I think it's architecturally interesting. I mean, some, you know, it's always in a matter of opinion, but I think it's an interesting building.
Yeah.
Through the chair, I'd like to have Justin comment, because I think he's
Sure.
Regarding, regarding what I've, yeah.
Thank you. And I should have added, but when I started, I did receive two emails from residents in the neighborhood that were in support. One of them even did a survey of, of businesses they hoped would be in this building two years ago. And overwhelmingly, it was a market, retail, and things that you would expect for that, that street. But just in response to some of the questions, good questions about the licensing, staff's recommendation was that, the way that the, or, the license is written is exactly how council, or Mayor Protem Polika interpreted. The certificate of occupancy would say no on-premise consumption. And so that would be invite, if that was found, that seating was added and things like that, it would be in violation. Their certificate of occupancy could be revoked. And so that was, that was what we had discussed with the applicant. Yeah. And staff's comfortable with that.
I, I just want to, I just want to add that I, I think this is great. This is one of those opportunities where, you know, you, you take an ordinance that, you know, doesn't quite meet the needs of a community, and you're able to work around that to provide something unique within a neighborhood. So I, I think this is great. This is great.
Just clarification from me. You used to own that little house right behind there, too. Is that part of the operation?
That's where I was born and raised. I, I sold it.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't part of the operation.
No.
Thank you.
So I just, just one more question through the chair. So you know, we have Ernie's Market on the, kind of the west side. You'll kind of be like, uh,
I'm gonna be Ernie's Market on steroids.
I feel a rumble.
Hope you accept requests for certain type of sandwiches and.
All right, very good. Any other discussion?
Just a question. Will you deliver?
That's possible. I haven't got to that point yet, but sure.
All right. Council for some music.
I'd just like to say that anyone who knows me knows I loathe fast, fast food. And I really like the idea that you're bringing back some healthy options for our neighborhood, especially in that neighborhood that's kind of a fast food haven. And I love that you're returning some of the nostalgia. I was a Rialto's visitor when I was a child. So it's nice to see some of those buildings coming back to life.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Polika?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Uh, next is item 8D, an ordinance to amend Chapter 6 Building and Building Regulations to add Article 13 Unsolicited Written Material, Section 6, 6 dash 392 through 6 dash 398. Who's introducing this one?
Mayor, your honor, I'm, I'm certainly happy to introduce this item. Your honor, a couple of months ago, Councilmember Whitey had suggested that the ordinance committee take a look at the possibility of regulating unsolicited written materials that are placed at persons' property and at various locations on somebody's property, as it relates to recent consideration by the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals on that issue. This issue had been considered by the ordinance committee a couple of years ago. And at that time, there was First Amendment concerns. And the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals had recently determined that a narrowly tailored ordinance can regulate unsolicited written material if there's still certain locations that would be designated where such materials could be provided to a property. The ordinance committee did consider this issue and has reviewed a proposed ordinance. It recommends that council consider approving this ordinance. It identifies several locations at an individual's property where such unsolicited written material could still be located to comply both with the Sixth Circuit case and to allow for the, for the dissemination of that type of material. But it can't just be thrown indiscriminately on somebody's property. And the purpose that is set forth in the ordinance and reviewed by the ordinance committee is that it addresses a legitimate public safety purpose by keeping these materials out of the public infrastructure and sewer system, as well as a adverse blighting effect on, on properties. If there's any questions with respect to the draft, I'd certainly be happy to answer. One final item is this, in discussing the ordinance committee and staff, this proposed ordinance, the recommended timeline for, should council decide that it wishes to adopt this ordinance, would be an effective date of 90 days after publication. So it would not take effective date until early next year.
Which would give us time to notify parties who, we know.
That's correct, your honor.
Signed unsolicited. Jordan, did you have something else you wanted to add, or?
No, just if you have questions from the enforcement side.
Okay. Before we go there, any questions or comments from the audience? Sherri Wells?
You got, you're making several of us in this room happy already, who are very tired of the, the Free Press little pink things that are thrown on the driveway apron. And I'm assuming, and this, this hurts me, you know, that people will just take them and throw them in the trash instead of letting them dry out and then emptying that plastic bag into the recycling bin because it's all recyclable. But when it's damp and all that other scuzzy stuff. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Any other comments from the audience? All right, questions from council?
I guess, actually, I'll start just by, as part of the introduction. Similar to what Sherri just said, I noticed that, you know, we'd constantly get those advertisements that are just thrown in our driveway aprons indiscriminately. It's not every house, and it depends on what day of the week. And I noticed exactly Sherri did, they would get waterlogged, pretty disgusting. Some of them would move actually by the sewer grates and block the sewer grates. And so on our street alone, on Camden, on the east side, we'd have to actually move them because we would have water backing up. And so I, I took a look at it right when I first got on council, and then observed that the Sixth Circuit Court of Appeals had basically changed the law in this area. It allowed us to actually regulate this. And so once that had come about, I had mentioned that. Kudos to Councilman Polika, who did look at this very same issue several years ago. But at that point, the law, at least as interpreted by the courts, is we probably couldn't regulate to the same way that this ordinance provides. When I looked at the ordinance, I, when I drafted it, the first draft of it is based upon the Kentucky ordinance in which the case originated from. And a lot of that, what I did was I just kind of mirrored the language as to the door, where they could put it. So it's exactly constitutionally sound. As an attorney, I'm very cautious of First Amendment issues and limiting that. But this isn't a limit, this is just a time, place, and manner restriction, not necessarily content based. So people are still free to put things at the door. But instead of just throwing them in the driveway or in the yard, it says you must attach it to the door, or a mail slot's permissible, or at least on a porch. This would also apply, I believe, and I can direct this to Dan, this would be anybody running for office, too, is supposed to secure, or would it not?
Something, something different. It's covered under a different.
Well, if somebody's actually deliver, it, it would cover, it is, it is a content-neutral unsolicited written material regulation. So it doesn't address the content at all. But, but if somebody places something up on a, a porch, a residence porch, they have certain defined locations where it would be acceptable and allowed for under the ordinance.
And then that's, okay.
No, I, I want to make sure that distinction's out there, because I knew you clarified that, and I appreciate that, but I'm going to repeat you. Because there's a lot of, a lot of noise on Facebook and such about that we're banning these things. We cannot ban them. It's, we're, we're regulating where they can put them. So they're not just tossed willy-willy in your yard at the end of the driveway and everything else. And, and the ordinance clearly defines where they can be placed. So I just, I just don't want everybody next Sunday to say, well, here they are again. No, you're going to get them. You're just going to get them in different places. And consequently, I think they've already caught wind of it, because mine, this, this Sunday, was not at the end of my driveway. It was up on my porch leaning against the door. So they've already amended their ways, I think. Go ahead.
Practice. No, and the one amendment that I want to give our city attorney credit to after the first draft was the actual responsibility. It's, I believe, and you can clarify this, Dan, if you need to, but basically, it's the publisher, there's a rebuttable presumption that it, the publisher's responsible. These are civil infractions, not misdemeanor crimes. $100 for each violation. So if they did five driveways, technically, that could be five violations. So I just wanted to clarify that. But originally, when this did come up, I was drafting it, and I was going to leave it for the next council to do. But Gene, one of our seniors in the senior group, said, Dennis, I want this, if you can get this done before the end of the year. So hopefully, I believe this will pass. So Gene, we actually got this done.
And I'd like to add, just for clarification, this is strictly for unsolicited material. If you order a subscription to the Free Press or some other publication, this does not apply. If they throw it on your front lawn, you need to call the company that you have the subscription with. The city can't, can't do anything about it. This is solely unsolicited material.
All right. So we're still at questions from council. Are there any other questions?
I do have a question. Can you clarify how it'll be enforced? I'm just a little bit confused with the three violation portion of it. Maybe like, explain what enforcement looks like of this.
Sure. Through the chair, Councilmember Music, basically, what, part of the 90 days as well is, is refining communications around that as well. My understanding of the current plan would be, as Councilmember Whitey had said, so if you're, if you're delivering unsolicited materials, and let's say you're, you have somebody out there doing a route, and they hit five houses on the block, and they throw it in the bush, all five houses, that's, if those, if those enforcements are delivered to the CED department, and they're verified as violations, that's five tickets. So that would be $500. So that's, and, and one of the reasons that's why we want to do the communication, to make sure all parties are aware that that's going to be the rules of the road, but also to clarify what is and is not a violation. This is not something that, and, and Dan, Chris, please keep me honest here if I'm wrong, but this is not something that you can enforce via C Click Fix. What would have to happen is a resident would have to report this, or a property owner, or a tenant, or anyone who's feeling aggrieved by an alleged violation would report this to the CED department. We would have to send an inspector out there, like most other property violations, field verify that a violation is actually there, and then issue the ticket to the publisher. And that's, that's how we would do it.
Thank you for the question.
You're welcome.
I also think, I think it's important that each violation I also think, I think it's important that each violation could result in a separate ticket because multimillion-dollar corporations, if it was $100 fines for littering the city, basically with anything on the street or in undesignated places, it'd just be $100 cost of doing business. At least this adds a lot more teeth to it and can make it very expensive based upon each violation. So I thought that was very important to have in there.
Thanks. Other questions? All right, you want to make a motion?
Sure, I'll make that. I would move that we approve the ordinance amending Chapter 6 Building and Building Regulations to add Article 13 Unsolicited Written Materials, Section 630, I'm sorry, 6-392 through 6-398 as contained in the packet.
Support.
Moved by Whitey, supported by Polica. Discussion.
Just for clarification, do we have to add will be 90 days?
Through the chair, it's already in the body.
It's in the body, okay.
Well, I'll say for discussion, I didn't mean to make any suggestion that there's no teeth to this because there is. I think it's a nice step forward in taking it as far as we legally can as a municipal entity. So I'm grateful for the support Councilman Whitey and Mayor Proton Polica have leaned on this over the years. So I'm glad we're getting this done.
You, too. And just for, through the chair, just for confirmation, Jordan, you were going to be creating some materials to do as a presentation, like in February, just to let the public know, you know, what is, what is not acceptable with some graphics of where on the porch, yes, where on the porch, no.
That's correct. We want to try to make this as straightforward as possible, and we're going to work to that end with the Communications Department to make sure we get that right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks.
Yeah, just one more thing. I think that to make sure everybody's on notice is an extremely important thing. I want to make sure everybody has noticed that it's coming about. Also, I'll say that two people who don't support this ordinance are my two sisters. We're going to be pretty upset. They're couponers, and they collect those things, so they go around on Saturday nights and grab a bunch, and they say, well, it's easier to pick up that way, Dennis, if you guys, you know, regulate that. So basically, so I know two people within my own family who would be upset about this, but it's for the best interest of the community, so.
That'll make Christmas fun.
Oh, Christmas would be great.
Any other discussion? All right, Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Polica?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Lees May?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes, ordinance passes. Thank you very much. 8E, consideration to adopt the City of Ferndale Capital Improvement Plan 2021 to 2025. Kyle?
Good evening, counsel and mayor. I'm pleased to present to you the Capital Improvement Plan for 2021 to 2025. This presentation is just a short introduction to what the CIP is and how we've designed it for this year for your viewing and use. So I'm going to keep the explanation as short as I can, but for folks at home who haven't gone through a CIP process before, I do want to explain some of the changes that we made to try to make this a little bit more understandable for residents. So here's what I'll walk through. But I did want to start by sort of defining what a CIP is to the city. And what it is, is essentially a menu for counsel to select from during the budget cycle. Approval of the CIP, the Capital Improvement Plan, does not equal budgeting or funding these projects. So for starters, what is a capital improvement project? As you can see listed here, there's seven different policies which define a capital improvement project in the City of Ferndale. And what we did was we reached out to each department head with this definition and said, what do you have going on? What are the needs of the city in the next five years? The funds for these projects come from the funds listed there. But the one that most people are familiar with is the general fund and the various departments within it. Here's the timeline that we used for the capital improvement plan this year. We're at the final stages of city council adoption of the plan, which again, does not equal prescription. This is a suite of topics and projects for council to use during the budget cycle. And the CIP would not have been put together without the amazing team that was asked to participate from the city. So I want to personally thank everybody who participated, including Mayor Proton Polica, who sat through two full days of interviewing department heads on why their projects matter to the City of Ferndale. So within the summary that was attached to the agenda packet, we did things a little bit differently than in the past. And what I'd like to do is explain sort of how things are organized and how we think that that helps to present the CIP to the city. So you'll find on each summary page a list of the various projects that apply for that year or funding source. For starters, we sorted each project into either operational or strategic. And as you can see defined here, strategic projects are those that support either the master land use plan or strategic goals. And I'll get into the strategic goals, strategic plan or strategic goals a little bit later. Operational projects do not necessarily meet those criteria, but what they do is provide tools to complete the strategic projects or to provide general services to the city. So for example, a new vehicle in DPW that will salt the roads doesn't necessarily support the master land use plan, and it may fit into some strategic goals. But overall, this is a tool to deliver community service to the city and provide a safe environment for our residents. The second thing we did was to change the prioritization schedule of the various projects. So instead of going from a numbered system where every department head would decide, you know, this is a top priority for the city, we tried to make it a little bit more objective. And as you can see before you, we defined it through must-have, should-have, or could-have. And a good sort of sentence to illustrate this is the statement, we must have functional emergency vehicles to protect the community. We should have comfortable working spaces for staff, and we could have new technology before it is due for replacement. So we're trying to measure these based on emergent need or things that we can, you know, push down till a later year if funding becomes available. Although for the record, I do really think that we should have comfortable working spaces, and I hope that staff members don't...
You're on record now.
Disagree with me. I don't believe that. The third thing we did was to try to make this plan more accessible for city council to use it as you're making the difficult decisions in the budget cycle. So instead of having two projects that on paper are completely different apples to oranges, how do you compare them when you have to select funding? So we decided to create a score based on questions that we asked each CIP applicant. The scores came out from 0 to 100, and each question reflected the city council's strategic goals. Here's a couple examples of the questions. So overall, each of these questions represents either a strategic goal, something in the master land use plan, or various items that we know are important to the city and which we need in order for the city to function. So for example, does it comply with local, state, or federal law? A lot of times, we will receive unfunded mandates from higher authorities. And this is a good way to sort of sort out things that we have to do based on unfunded mandates, even though they may not score as highly in other potential areas. An important thing to note in the scoring system is that we put a lot of impact on regional service. If an item extends beyond the borders of the city, so for example, a new fire vehicle that runs to our neighboring communities when they're in need, that's a regional impact. And that not only strengthens us, but also the communities around us. On each summary page, you'll also see this set of charts and graphs. And so I've already explained strategic versus operational spending. And the top left corner is a basic chart which breaks down spending requests based on department and year. What I'm really excited about, and what I think is an important part of this plan, is the investment allocation request by strategic goal. So as you see before you, these are the strategic goals for council. And what we did was we built that directly into the CIP so that you can see where department heads think that money should be invested and how that supports the overall strategic plan. The definition for each of these strategic goals has been included in the CIP summary packet. And you can, of course, find the definition on the city's webpage under our strategic plan page. So those are kind of the highlights of what we changed this year and what we did to try to make this plan more accessible and kind of, I think, a little bit more digestible as a large document that has five years' worth of potential projects in it. Along with that, I do have to say, some of these projects include, like I said, the operational equipment, such as vehicles. And what we're also undertaking, myself and DPW and CED department through the Sustainability Planner, is a inventory and rewriting of the city's fleet management. What we want to do is set a definition for life cycle for each department's fleet vehicles, and then also build into that plan the sustainability measures that we think are expected for the City of Ferndale. And what that would include would be thresholds or triggers for each department to invest in sustainable vehicles, sustainable infrastructure or equipment as they use in their daily operations. So that's my explanation of the capital improvement plan. And I'm happy to take any questions or engage in discussion of it.
That's an awful lot of work and a few slides, just saying. Boiled down well.
Yeah, thank you.
So before we turn to counsel, I'll give the opportunity for anyone in the audience who would like to question or comment, please step forward. The podium's yours. Thanks.
Evelyn Elster, West Drayton. Overall, for 2021 through 25, CED at 7.15 million and Parks at 7.28 million allocated each more than DPW and Public Safety combined. Strategic fluff at 17.17 million versus operational at 2.52 million. In 2021, another 215K for skate park improvements over and above the 250K we already paid. 660K for Woodward Streetscape. CED wants 1.65 million for Woodward Complete Streets Plan to add bike lanes, as well as 50K for Vester Streetscape. In 2022, CED wants another 3.85 million for Woodward Complete Street Bike Lanes, again, and another 900K for Vester Streetscape, again. The Woodward Complete Streets Plan study was obviously geared towards the desired pipe dream outcome. The very nature of our CED's existence is more and more and more towards excess without end. No other city besides Pleasant Ridge along the Woodward Corridor has bought into this grand scheme. And if the county decides on advanced mass transit in future, any work done to accommodate this plan will be lost. Vehicular traffic already avoids our Nine Mile bottleneck and has greatly increased traffic on Withington, Camborn, and Drayton North and Nine Mile. No doubt, the same holds true South and Nine Mile also. Expect the same avoidance of Woodward going north and south if this plan were to be implemented with increased traffic onto Pinecrest and Hilton Roads. How can we call ourselves an environmentally conscious city and then design our roads for maximum fuel consumption via these bottlenecks? Pleasant Ridge has implemented one of these little bottlenecks on Southbound Woodward at the police station, which has traffic all jacked up now. This is costly and detrimental, not an improvement. In 2023, after 2 million for a boiler and a roof, Collet gets a third installment for yet another 4 million, including Wheeler's new offices. Parks and Recs has already allocated 6 million this last year in the budget. Coulter is gone, let's please get reasonable regarding Parks and Rec. In 2021 through 25, water and sewer infrastructure gets a total overhaul of what looks like the entire city for a whopping 9.125 million. Would these expenses be added to our water bills in addition to the increases for meter and radio transmitter replacement? I would ask that council return this capital improvement plan back to the drawing board and it be geared to remain within the means of the taxpayers in Ferndale. You are our government, not our personal shoppers.
Thank you, Evelyn.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening, counsel. Just one point of clarification. So on page 608, which I believe is the summary of the $19 million that is projected for the capital improvement plan, can we get a breakdown of what it is in terms of must, should, and could? Just so we have a better understanding of the total 19 million. I see that the total's been broken out between strategic and operational, but I don't have an understanding of what is necessary, what is nice to have, and what we would like. So just for additional clarification on, again, that's page 608 on the packet.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anyone else? I don't want to cut anybody off. Are you coming up to speak, or are you? Okay, very good. With that, we'll close the audience questions and turn it back over to counsel. Kyle, do you want to address the issue of, can we cut the data a different way to must, should, and nice to have?
Yeah, we can do that.
I think it'd be interesting to see, too.
I will go ahead and guess that the majority will be must-haves because what we did ask was to look at critical infrastructure needs.
Right.
So those were at the top of each department head's thought process. But there are a couple could-haves, including some improvements to Parks, DPW, equipment, so forth. But yeah, we can easily pull that together.
Thanks. Questions from counsel? Without questions, I'll take a motion so we can move into discussion.
I move that the City of Ferndale Capital Improvement Plan 2021 to 2025 be approved as submitted by the Assistant City Manager.
Is there support?
Support.
Moved by Polica, supported by Whitey. We can move into discussion. I'll start. Up and down this process, I've heard nothing but great things about how it was run. You all executed it in the inclusivity of the process. It's really kind of complicated to find a systematic way to consider these things. And I think you've just done a fabulous job. And not only, I think the concise way in which you reported it, and I understand why you did that, and I thank you for that, is misleading about the enormous amount of effort and organization this takes. And so I think, well done to you and your team.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Through the chair. So I've been on this committee for a few years now, and I have to say that this is probably the best report that we've put out over those years, those several years. Kudos to Kyle for the incredible amount of work that he did in putting this together and to take a lot of information and condense it down into a few pages just to give you... The document is really designed for a view in the future. This is what we could do. It's not necessarily, you know, we're not going to vote on this tonight and say, okay, we have to do everything in this packet. But it gives us an idea of what we need to watch out for in the next five years. What are the expenses, the major expenses, that the city's going to have to put out? Ultimately, the council goes by the direction of the people. If the people want improvements in the parks, that's where we're going to invest our money. When I ran for council in 2014, Parks was my number one issue. That's why I have been pro everything going on in the parks. But that doesn't mean going forward, if a financial crisis comes along, that all of a sudden we're going to be, you know, investing $7 million into a park. I just, I really love having the ability to use this tool in the next couple of months as we're developing the budget to say, okay, what are the things that we have to have moving forward in 2020 to 2021? And this document is going to allow us to do that. And if there's any possibility, maybe we need to move something forward from '21, '22 into 2021. I will add that, because I brought this up actually a number of years ago. I think we need to look a little further out than just five years, and I'm talking about the big-ticket items. When I mentioned the Collet Center and the DPW back in 2015... When I mentioned the Collet Center and the DPW back in 2015, those weren't conversations we or the community were having. You know, now we're having them. At some point, City Hall's going to need some work again. Maybe it needs to be replaced. Who knows? It's not going to be in five years or 10 years, it could be 25 years. But the last thing you want is, you know, in 2040 to say, oh, in 2045, we've got, you know, five years, we've got to replace City Hall. We should be looking toward much further out, especially for our big expense items. So that's all I have to say.
I would just like to amend for anybody recording this, we're not replacing City Hall in five years.
Yeah.
Let's just get that right out there. It's not going to be the last thing people hear for my last meeting.
Well, we could always move it into the Credit Union One building, which they wanted to do 10 years ago.
Any other discussion?
Through the chair. Kyle, I just want to say, reading this plan was a joy, if that is a possibility, for the amount of reading we had this week. I read a lot of documents as a teacher, look at a lot of layouts of documents, and this one is laid out really well. What I really love about this is the ordering of what we need and the priorities. It's something I definitely do in my home as we go forward and make improvements. It's great to see a city asking their departments to not just say, what is everything you need, but what is the most important thing? I think some of the things have not been asked for in the past because there was just an idea that there was no money, and some of those things kind of fell through the cracks till it was an emergency situation, and this sets us up to have less emergency situations, which I really appreciate. So thank you.
Thanks.
I'll also echo that. When I was in my MPA program at Wayne State, one of the things, anytime I could do a report or any research with Ferndale, I would do it. I would steer group projects towards Ferndale. And Cheryl actually was very instrumental in my budgeting class. She sat down with a couple of us. We talked about capital improvement, what the city does, as well as the complete budgeting. And I know it's a multi-year process. Everybody, you know, puts everything in. There's a lot of work that goes into this. So I want to make sure that I say that it's very well-recognized, and I know how difficult this can be. And to take something that big and narrow it down into the packet, I think is something pretty remarkable. So thank you to you, and everybody who's a part of the process.
Thank you. Go Warriors.
Through the chair, I would also just add one more comment. This was Kyle's first project. After being appointed as Assistant City Manager, you had the wherewithal, confidence, and ability to just run with it and speak to all of city council's objectives of improving the capital improvement plan process and adding a rubric for decision-making around prioritization. I'd also like to credit the Finance Department. This is an add-on to their process they already have with end-of-the-year audit. And so they put together a great team. I've never seen such a well-run collaborative team. So credit where credit's due.
Great. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, Marnie, will you call the roll?
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes, well done. Thank you. Regular agenda item 8F, which is the approval of the ordinance to amend Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulation, Article 6 Housing Code, to add Division 3 Outdoor Conditions, Section 6-125 through 6-131, to the Ferndale Code of Ordinances. Dan, do you want to introduce that?
I'd be happy to, Mayor. Very briefly, earlier this fall, Councilmember Music had suggested that the city staff take a look at some of the regulations and ordinances that existed as it related to blighting property and referred it to the Ordinance Committee. The Ordinance Committee has looked at ordinances regarding blighting conditions specifically as it relates to residential districts. And there was a draft that was considered that took some of the existing ordinances that were applicable to commercial properties, and the draft before you this evening would apply some of those regulations to residential properties, specifically as it relates to exterior conditions. It addresses and defines what would constitute outdoor storage that would be acceptable and outdoor storage that would be not acceptable. The draft before you would allow for up to 36 square feet of miscellaneous outdoor storage items. That would be accessory to a principal residential structure, so they would have to be related to residential use. There's several specific exemptions that are in this draft that would not be subject to the regulation. Items that would include playground equipment or children's toys, those would be carved out from the regulation. Permanently installed facilities, bicycles or similar vehicles not powered by a motor that would be in a number, not more than two such vehicles or bikes per number of persons residing in the premises. Goods offered in a non-commercial yard sale that would be not in excess of 72 hours, which is consistent with the city's ordinance. Lawn furniture, tables, chairs, working grill, umbrellas, and benches, those would all be carved out and allowed to remain in the residential use, as an accessory to the residential use. But this draft would address large areas where there's blighted conditions that have not had a clear ordinance that would be applicable to it. It does have a number of definitions regarding refuse and rubbish that would be applied and would be, those types of materials obviously would be prohibited in the residential zone districts. So this draft is for your consideration, has been reviewed by the Ordinance Committee. The Ordinance Committee recommends council's consideration of it.
All right, very good. Before we move to council, is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment or question on this? Sherri?
Yes, Sherri Wells, 315 West Troy. I can understand not wanting blight, but I also think that there's a property rights possible problem here. I can give you three examples of automobiles. I have two automobiles in my driveway. One of them right now temporarily doesn't have a state sticker because our beloved postal service lost an envelope that had a check in it, part of which was going to pay for me to put the sticker on that other car. It is not an abandoned vehicle. For quite a few months, I had what had been my mom's car when she was alive in my driveway. My brother had been driving it to and from their last property, and then at age 62, he died. So I had to wade through some of his probate court stuff by his son in South Carolina before I could, because I had the car back in my driveway before I had everything straightened out to where I could put it on Michigan license and in the trust name so that I could sell it. It was also not an abandoned car. I know of someone in Ferndale here who has a car he's slowly working on as he has the time and money. It's not a Jaguar, but it's also not in his garage. It is not an abandoned car. So the blight thing has to be very narrowly drawn, as was said. At one point, Ferndale had some used item stores that were trashy, and they wrote an ordinance that was so broad that Royal Oak had all the antique stores, because anything used couldn't be sold in Ferndale. There's something lately with the, one of the best things to do with leaves on your front lawn is to chop them up with your mower and just let them be on the ground. But when winter starts on November 11th, even our DPW people didn't get all the leaves vacuumed up, and when they tried to vacuum, they had to have an extra person there loosening them up from where they were stuck and wet on the ground. I'm not about in this cold to get my mower out there and chop up the leaves on my lawn. So there's got to be some discretion, and that's a dangerous word. The third point I'd like to make is that when the city sends out a notice of code enforcement potential violation and gives you time to clean it up, they really need, and this is not just me, there's others that have had this conversation, too. They need a list of the most common problems that they can just check whichever one is yours, because it just says, "Clean up this place." What do you mean by "clean it up"? And so they can have a blank for any fill-in that's something that doesn't fit their little four checklist, but some of us really need to know specifically what they're complaining about, because some of the rest of it just might be our way of landscaping our yard. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherri. Anyone else? All right, come back to questions from council, or Dan, do you want to opine on the opinion of blight?
If I could just briefly, I mean, the city's Code of Ordinances already would address vehicles that are not properly licensed. A valid point that was addressed, but that is already prohibited, having an expired vehicle on somebody's property or having a flat tire. That's not new language that exists in the Code of Ordinances that would not be permitted. Certainly, that circumstance that was explained, hopefully code enforcement would utilize their discretion in that. And I think my understanding is they generally try and discuss the issue personally with the property owner. Obviously, a clear description of what the concern is would be very helpful for any property owner to understand what the problem is. But I think that doesn't need to be in the body of the ordinance.
Okay. Questions from council? Is there a motion? Julia?
Yes, I move to accept the ordinance to amend Chapter 6 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 6, is it Article 6?
Six.
Six, thank you. Housing Code, to add Division 3 Outdoor Conditions, Section 6 through 125 through 6 through 131, to the Ferndale Code of Ordinances.
Support. Moved by Music, supported by Whitey. Discussion?
Dan, I did, through the chair, if I may, I wanted to just highlight two points that are really changes, and I think Dan actually touched on them really well. We're looking to restrict the number of bicycles to two bicycles or two non-motorized vehicles per person living in the household. So if a family has four people living there and they have four bicycles in their yard, or eight bicycles in their yard, that would be absolutely permissible. It just goes off the number of people living there. And then the other one that is one of the bigger changes of the ordinance is number 10 on page 4, which is limiting the amount of outdoor storage to 36 square feet of the premises. That was something that the committee looked at, measured, thought about, and we actually went back and forth on the amount of space, things like a lawnmower might take up, a snow blower might take up. And we really tried to compile, if you have all of these items and you have one of each of these items, what is about the space? So 36 square feet is what we came up with. Obviously, if you have a garage, you can keep anything you need in there, inside a shed, but this is more just outside scattered items that we're trying to contain into a 36 square feet.
Through the chair, that's a very important point. That was discussed at length, and it was, there was a concern that a number of properties don't have accessory structures of a garage or shed, and so that there should be some tolerance for some amount. And the calculation was, it may not be precise, but it was deemed to be an appropriate amount, the six-by-six calculation.
Very good.
Through the chair. I'm actually a little afraid to ask this question. So I winterize a vehicle. I actually park it on my patio behind my house, take out the battery, throw a cover on it. I'm in violation, aren't I?
It's not in your, is it in your garage? It's not in your garage.
It's not in my garage. It's not visible from the street.
I think that's something we can talk about.
Well, that's storing, that's storing a vehicle, you know.
Way to go, Julia.
But it's, it's...
It's on impervious. I would, I think that might have to be looked at.
Okay.
We can take that offline to save you the...
I may be voting no.
Are there other discussion points?
I guess we should clarify, if your vehicle has air in the tires, is on concrete, and has tags, it is...
Yeah, it has tags.
You're fine.
Those items would be correct.
Correct. All right.
Is it part of your vehicle? Or just separate?
Any other discussion?
Yes, you're right.
Please.
Please.
Any other discussion?
It's not on the law.
No.
All right, Marnie, will you call the roll?
Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Greg?
Yes?
Are you voting yes?
Yes.
We got one more to go, people. We can do this.
I am voting yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Music?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you. Next is regular agenda item 8G, which is the approval of the Ford Safety Insights six-month pilot agreement with Ford Smart Mobility LLC, as submitted by the planning manager. Justin?
If I may?
Well, let's have him introduce it first.
Okay.
So we all know what we're talking about.
Hello again. So staff had been, is always looking at new technology and new opportunities for data and to get a better understanding of how we can plan for mobility projects, street projects. And so I was introduced to Ford's product through their mobility arm called safetyinsights.ford.com. And so essentially, it just aggregates data from a lot of different places, crash data, hard braking events, pedestrian crashes, all in one place, and then visualizes it through mapping. It's a good opportunity, I think, for a smaller community like Ferndale. Most of the time, I find that, you know, New York, Chicago, and big cities are being invited to be part of these sorts of pilots. And so when I actually got a response, I was thrilled and thought of something we maybe we should pursue. It is a six-month pilot. There's an agreement in the packet that was reviewed by the city attorney. There's no charge for the pilot. There's no obligation to continue after that. It's a new product, so Ford has not came up with what the pricing model would be. They generally had said that we'd be in the lower tier if they tiered it by population, but they don't have an exact estimate yet. But it seemed like a good opportunity for no cost for six months.
All right, I'm going to go slightly out of order. Mayor Proton Pollocka?
Yeah. So let me start out saying that this is really an incredible project. That being said, I am an employee of Ford Motor Company, and therefore I am going to abstain from voting, because this will have a financial impact, even though there's no money being exchanged. There is a financial, what's the word I want to, there's a value to the information that we're going to be receiving with this partnership or working agreement. So therefore, I'm going to be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Councilperson Music?
Yes, my partner Jenna, who lives with me, is a Ford employee, and we discussed this topic, and we felt that it related to, it was in the realm of her job, so I've decided as well to abstain from the vote, although I think it is a very cool project.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the public? Brian?
Good evening again. Full disclosure, I am also a Ford employee, but I have a few questions, so I guess it's good to have you up there, too. You wouldn't have enough of those. A couple of questions, and they're largely around data security and how much information that Ford or whoever is going to know about us as a city or individuals. I'd like to confirm that the free agreement is not going to lock us into any future cost and that we have to opt out if we don't, like, unsubscribe by a certain day or something that we get charged.
I think Justin addressed that, and said there's no obligation.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify that. Will this data capture tool collect data on residents and visitors of Ferndale, or will this only apply to municipal vehicles that opt into the test?
Okay.
And then next question, will the city of Ferndale be able to keep this data once the six-month test is complete? And is this data able to be sold or used by Ford or any other entities other than the city of Ferndale?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Brian. Anyone else from the public? Justin, can you address the data security issues? Do you have enough information?
Yes, to a certain extent. So the, really, the data is all coming from Ford and their sources. We're, the city's not really giving any data. We can opt out after the six months. We're, the city's not really giving any data. We can opt out after the six months. So residents and visitors, the data that, that Ford gets is through, they have vehicle data and then they have crash data. So the crash data they have is pretty, I think, probably the same source as we get from SEMCOG through the various police departments around the state. The, like, for example, hard braking, in instance, that only comes from Ford vehicles. And it only comes from Ford vehicles that have opted into this program when they've bought a Ford vehicle. I imagine, that's something I could follow up on. I imagine there's probably a way for people that have bought Ford vehicles to opt out at a later time, but it is, it's from something that they voluntarily have opted into. And so there's no data that we're really giving. We're just using the tool and getting it. And so there's nothing that the city would be selling as part of this pilot.
Okay.
I think that was all of them.
Other questions from council? Please do.
I move that we accept the approval of the Ford Safety Insights six-month pilot agreement with Ford Smart Mobility LLC as submitted by the planning manager.
Support. Moved by Raylon Leaks May and supported by Councilman Whitey. Any discussion? All right, Marnie, call the roll.
Councilmember Leaks May?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitey?
Yes.
And Mayor Martin?
Yes, motion passes. Thank you very much. Next is call to council. Our opportunity for any announcements from department heads, city employees, and electeds. If you are an employee and would like to speak to call to council, please line up against that wall. I'm not doing a roll call. And we'll come one at a time. So Cheryl, why don't you kick us off?
I would be happy to. I just wanted to let you guys know that tonight was the final wrap-up of audit. Can finally move on. Budget starts first weekend in January. We do, we're probably going to use some of the next couple of weeks wrapping up some reports that go to the state. And that's about it.
Fair enough. Thank you. George?
Counsel, good evening. I just want to quickly say thank you to everyone on council that worked on all the ordinance changes that we adopted tonight. And I just wanted to put it out there for the community, for any of the Monday Night Warriors still watching at home. If you have any questions about what counts as a violation or how it will be enforced, you could reach out to me at jtwarty@ferndalem.gov or 248-546-2363. Again, that's 248-546-2363. If you have any questions about the enforcement procedures for any of these ordinances that were adopted tonight. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello? We'll try to keep this brief, considering we've been here so late. There's a few items that are relevant as far as the police department is concerned this year. Our Narcan saves this year are up to 22, 22 lives saved. Bad news is, that's 22 lives saved. There's still a long way to go with the opioid crisis. Another relevant topic, especially this time of year, is package theft off your porches. Obviously, cameras are always a good option. Doesn't help you once they're stolen unless they're able to ID somebody. Try to keep your packages out of sight. Hopefully, deliver them around the side, behind a gate. Try to keep them out of the sight from the seat, from the street or the sidewalk. Other options for delivery, work is an option, friends or family members. Or have your neighbor collect your package when you get the notification that it was delivered. A lot of people are getting those updates that they recently delivered. So maybe have somebody near your home who could scoop up your package and help us fight this epidemic. On the topic of school bus stop safety, we have been enforcing violations of the bus stops. We have issued some violations, but we have also noticed that there is an education component. Some of the residents and parents of these children may think it's a violation to drive past a bus with yellow lights on. That is not a crime. Our officers have filled complaints and had to educate the public. But we, there, we have issued some tickets for school bus violations. We are working with the school district and transportation to increase this education. And lastly, thank you to outgoing councils. A pleasure working with you. And we look forward to working with the incoming session. Thank you.
You too, Dennis. Thank you. Chief?
Good evening. The holiday season's among us here, and we've had, already had a chimney fire up in Pleasant Ridge. Luckily, there was someone walking their dog and they seen flames coming out of the chimney flue. So I'd advise people that use their wood burning devices, whether it's a chimney or, I'm sorry, a fireplace or a wood burning stove, to have that inspected on a regular basis, depending on how much you use it. Creosol builds up and the mortar breaks down in the flue and in the firebox as well. That's what happened there. The mortar broke down and it got in between the wall, the exterior wall. So we had to pull bricks out and everything and take care of that. Also, we've had a couple of careless cook fires. People leave unattended, or they just start cooking this time of year. Turn the oven on and they don't realize that someone might have stored some equipment, like plastic equipment or things that go on counters in the oven, and then those start to melt and catch fire. Please water your tree. Turn your lights off if you're not home. And no one, no one intended candle fires, please. And it's been a pleasure working with you all.
You too. Thanks.
Thanks.
Good evening, council. So a little bit of news on parking behalf. Just wanted to let everybody know that there is free parking throughout the city, no enforcement, throughout our municipal lots, anyway, on Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, which is next Tuesday and Wednesday, I believe, as well as New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, so the following week. And then a little communication shout-out to parkferndale.com, for those of you who aren't following. We have this news listed there, as well as we have a great text alert system there. It's grown by leaps and bounds. Basically, anybody can sign up to receive a text alert and through Park Ferndale. And anything that impacts parking, you know, whether it be the DOT or a holiday closure like this, anything else, snow emergency, you'll get a text alert from the city. And those who have found it and started using it have told us that it's wonderful and greatly appreciated. So a reminder, we'll probably do a share this week and just remind people that that text alert lives there and kind of encourage people to sign up. So.
Cool.
That's it for this evening. Thank you all so much. It's been such a pleasure to work with you this year.
Thanks. You too. Dan?
Good evening, mayor, council. Thanks to everyone recognized tonight for everything that they've done and that they continue to do for the city. I absolutely appreciate it. What I want to talk about tonight is the major recruitment effort that we currently have going on for Ferndale firefighters. We placed ads in major publications, online ad boards, and also targeted recruitment sources. The ad is always is placed on the city's website and on the city's Facebook page. I would encourage all of you to share that on your personal Facebook page to widen our reach. The effort will lead to an open house, which is scheduled for January 15th, where we will interview all of the qualified candidates that come forward. And we're excited to get some great people in here at the fire department.
Great, thank you. Loretta?
Good evening. Just a few announcements. One, I wanted to let you guys know that we received a Project Play Equipment Grant from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan. Funded by Ralph C. Wilson Jr. Foundation. And so what that is, is we'll get a lot of equipment donated to help with our programming as well as equipment similar to like, that we can use as like a library, if you think of checking out a library card. I mean, have a library card and checking out a book. We'll have equipment that the community can come to the recreation center to actually check out and do outdoor sports during the summer or winter, any season. And then they can just return it, and then, you know, other members of the community can come and check out more equipment. In addition, we'll have a mobile, mobile recreation that'll happen throughout the summer and spring in 2020. We're partnering with the YMCA with that through this grant, so we can offer additional recreational opportunities in the park over the summer season. It is a $50,000 grant. We've partnered with Hazel Park with that grant. So we'll both be offering same services to each of our communities.
You've done such a great job with those grants.
Thank you. And it's, it's a team effort, and I definitely want to give a shout-out to Lisa for taking initiative on this grant specifically. We had our breakfast with Santa last, the weekend before last, and we sold out. So it was a successful event. We had about between 130, 150 participants. Santa was great, and we've got great feedback from it. We're reviewing the surveys now, so we can give you an update on that later. I wanted to announce again that we are hosting our Recreation Pistons Night on January 11th. So if you haven't gotten your tickets, you can get your tickets now. Not only do we get discounted tickets, but you also get access to the Performance Center, which is the Pistons where they practice, as well as do a lot of other things. And you'll have a tour provided, so you actually get to see the entire facility. It's brand-new. It's free parking. So you park at the Performance Center. There's a shuttle that'll take you to the Pistons game and back and forth. And at the end of the game, you also get to go on the court and shoot a round. So you get a lot for these tickets. And it's a group rate and group area. So all of Ferndale will be together, and there's two different options on where you can sit, whether you want a lower seating or upper seating. So I want to encourage everybody to get tickets. It is a fundraiser. So the funding does go towards our programming and our youth leagues. And that day at the Performance Center, our youth basketball league will be playing. So you get to see the game. It's optional, as well as see the Pistons play.
Really play?
Well, you get to play at the end of the game. You get to go on the court. And then lastly, I just wanted to announce that we did publish the bid documents for Shiffer, Geary, and Wanda Park for the construction to start in spring 2020. Thank you. And thanks again for your service. It was a pleasure.
Thanks, absolutely. Thanks. Come on up.
Counsel, how are we doing tonight?
Good.
So this is just a reminder to everyone in the community, outside of those today. If you have any curbside yard waste today, or this week is the last week to put that out of the curb, that will not pick back up again until April. So if you've got some leaves that need to be bagged and your garbage day is tomorrow, hopefully, you already have that done, or be cool with them hanging out in the yard for, maybe they'll blow in the neighbors. Who knows if you're lucky. Another thing is we have begun replacing water meters. That's been going fairly well so far. We're about 3% replaced, and we started just a couple of weeks ago. Contractor UMS has been putting out mailers requesting to schedule appointments. Would be great if you respond to those initial mailers. Otherwise, you will receive a door hanger a couple of weeks following that. If you don't respond to that door hanger, you will receive another one. They will come knock on the door and try and get you to schedule an appointment with us. Otherwise, we will, still we're replacing the meter, but probably at a later date. And then another little water update thing. Last week, we received our letter from the state saying that we, certifying that our test samples for our lead and copper sampling were certified, accepted by them, and are within the threshold set by the state of Michigan for parts per billion and in regards to lead, which was a good thing. So that, that is all on the up and up for the most part. And we continue to do everything that's required of us and plan for replacements and stuff like that. That'll be coming in the future. And then one more thing, since all of our guys just love Christmas lights so much. One of the things that one of our employees, Jason Hobbs, wanted to do this year was participate in the Moonbeam Event over at Beaumont. So those that do not know what that event is, it's basically like kind of a giant little light party deal over at the children's wing of Beaumont over on 13 and Woodward. So our guys decorated a few of the trucks to go up there along with everyone else. There's just a couple of pictures of them. Had Santa there and a nice little, you know, Sweet Dreams sign and stuff like that. That's all our trucks. So it was nice to see the new ones even lit up more than what they already are when they're normally out on the road. So that was a pretty neat little thing, neat thing that they did Friday night. So they were pretty excited about that. It was good. They said it was a really good turnout, ton of people there and just like a good event overall. So other than that, you know, just business as usual. Winter's probably going to start here sooner rather than later, I'm assuming. So you'll probably see actual snow emergencies and stuff like that coming. Probably in the near future, we'll see. So if you can't get your cars off the street, we'd appreciate that. We'll probably avoid a ticket from the police department if you do so. So other than that, it's been a pleasure. It's been real. It's been fun, council. So it's been real fun working with you guys. So I'd say catch you at the next meeting, but there's new people taking over for you. So enjoy being a citizen again, so.
Thanks. Marnie?
I have to follow the Dan and Tossic Show. Okay, so we have been, the clerk's office has been working with the city manager's office on online records management bid process. And we are coming to the point where we have, we're working with one of the vendors and hoping to have everything set to come back to council on January 13th of next year. Election time again. Our AV applications have been sent, all of our permanent AV apps names have been sent to PSI, our publication, excuse me, our application publishers. And they will be sending those out just after the first of the year, so keep your eyes out for AV applications. A reminder again that there is now no reason absentee voting in the state of Michigan. So we're seeing, expecting to see our AV numbers increase exponentially over the three elections coming up so far in 2020. And it has also been my honor and pleasure to work with all of you, and thanks for the memories.
Joe?
And, and finally, just a reminder out there that City Hall will be closed during the holiday season on Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, and New Year's Day. If your service, if your wait service will be disrupted, or DPW, if he's prepared, you can comment on that tonight and educate the public. If not, otherwise, he'll be working with the Communications Department to get that message out there. And I would also say it has been a pleasure serving all of you. Good luck in your future Game of Thrones action.
Dan?
Just one item, Your Honor. As you indicated earlier, the city staff and the ordinance committee has looked at the issue of oil and gas drilling and fracking. As that's a land use issue, that issue and recommendations relative to any future regulation of that would need to be considered by the Planning Commission, and there should be a, that material will be forwarded to the Plan Commission in the near future. And then happy holidays to everybody.
Thanks. You too. Greg?
Well, it has truly been a pleasure working with all of you on council this year. I consider all of you friends, many of you I've known before I ever got on council, or you ever got on council, Dan. So it, it's meant a lot to me, and I'm glad that we've had this opportunity. And I hope Julia will still want to get involved in, no, you don't.
Ferndale, no.
I know Dennis.
But not you.
Involved in so many other ways. So many other ways.
But thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to work with, with all of you. And I'm very fortunate that I get to work with Raylon again for another two years at least, and with the new council coming in, so. And then happy holidays, Merry Christmas, joyous Kwanzaa to all who ever celebrate a holiday.
All right.
Alan?
So I didn't get to say my, just my regards to, I was going to say Mayor Coulter, the county executive. But I just, I think he knows how I feel about him. Just like some of you, I'm able to reach out to him, and he's easily accessible. Has been a mentor to me for many years and a very good friend. So I'm excited to see what he does for Oakland County, and I look to be a part of that and witness that and support him. To the outgoing mayor, I just want to tell you that it has been a pleasure. I've learned so much from you.
I'm sorry.
I've learned a great deal from you. You, the way your perspective on things, and I just, I think you're just a pretty, pretty dynamite guy.
Thanks.
Very smart, so.
Thank you.
Stay involved and keep in touch since we're only like, what, a couple blocks away?
Like three blocks.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. To the outgoing councilmembers, man, oh, man. I don't know. It's just, it's just really been an honor. I mean, you guys just kind of jumped in here when the city called to action and just hit the ground running. And I'm really proud of both of you and just... You better stay in touch, I swear. You better stay involved, because we need, we need people like you, so. because we need, we need people like you, so it's been an honor. Uh, let's see here. Yes. So I am a firm believer in being a mentor to the younger population. And so when Ferndale High School students call and ask about something, some sort of advice, or some sort of information, well, I listen. And it just so happens that Mayor Elec Piana and I will be going to speak with about 25, 26, and 9th graders tomorrow at the high school about the road diet and Ferndale's walkability. And I'm just really excited because Mayor Elec Piana has this whole agenda planned. It's very thorough and extensive, and it's going to be a great learning experience for these students. And so it was really cute because that student messaged me, friended me on Facebook, one of my daughter's friends, and then messaged me shortly after about what he wanted. So thank you to Mayor Elec Piana to, for stepping up when I asked her to join, and I expect we're going to have more of these to come, because once we start it, you know it's not going to stop. I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, a Happy Hanukkah, Happy Kwanzaa, stay safe. I'm very fortunate to be able to spend the holidays with friends, family, and loved ones, and I wish the same for you all, and I'll see you in the new year, and I hope it's a prosperous, brand-new beginning for all of us. Thank you.
Julia?
Okay. I was able to join Oakland County businesspeople from all over Oakland County. Early morning, we had our big business roundtable, and they passed out the Prosper magazine. So I just went through, and I labeled all the pages where Ferndale is mentioned or featured that were not paid for ads. And so if you can, you see how many tabs there are. There was a lot, and I thought, well, maybe I should like go through and do Rochester, because they kind of came up a lot, but I didn't want to get petty. But Ferndale shows up a lot, and when I sat at a table with a bunch of strangers, because I was the only person, I was the only one there that I knew, I was with all these strangers, and every time I sat up for Ferndale, they were like, oh, cool. And then they wanted to know more about all the things that we do here. So it was a really cool reception from these major business leaders, that they all look to Ferndale for what to do next and how to move forward. I want to also thank the Council for having faith in me in this position. I think Greg called me out the best. I was pretty much a nervous wreck on the day of the vote, because I do know the accomplishments of the other people who were also contenders for that position, specifically Sherri, who's given a lot to our community, and I'm very thankful for people like her. I also want to thank the staff, because I jumped in full steam ahead with ordinances and ideas and things that we couldn't even get to, but you guys handled my kind of bullish nature in stride, and thank you all for all the hard work you do and for putting up with all of the questions. Unfortunately, I also have a very sad announcement to make. One of our longtime volunteers at Ferndale Pride, Dana Phillips, was murdered over the weekend. So she, this has been on the news stations today. This was very unexpected, obviously. Her and an 18-year-old who was in her care were murdered. At the top of the Ferndale Pride page currently, you'll see a link if you'd like to contribute to the funeral costs. The person who murdered them was apprehended. They are still looking for close to $2,000 to put on the funerals of both of these women. So if you are able to, please check out the Ferndale Pride link and donate. These are, not only did Dana volunteer with Pride, danced as one of our dancers. She also is one of the founders of Angelical Stepping Ground and volunteered in many capacities throughout the region.
Thanks, Julie. Jess?
So this is my last meeting, and we all know I'm not at a, generally at a loss for words, but I'm going to try to make this quick. I first want to thank every, the confidence of the residents. Many people have contacted me once I was appointed to the Council seat, and it's been great discussions. People who agree with me, but more so people who completely disagree, and I actually enjoy those kind of more. So, you know, and I'll even say one of my favorite residents is Evelyn. We agree on not much, but when she contacts me on Facebook, she had, and she left earlier night, because I was going to make sure to mention her, but who knows, maybe when I'm just celebrating as a citizen, I'll be sitting next to her in the audience at one of the meetings, so. I think we've got a lot in common, actually, but, but moving on from that, I just think that there was a lot of accomplishments in the last four months from this Council. We came in, we hit the ground running. There's a lot of transition. I mean, the three of us are appointed, we're appointed our current positions, and I thought that we worked well as a team. One thing I learned about this whole process is how much work goes into it behind the scenes, and the research and the collaboration. And so, I mean, that just goes, you know, so much work goes into it, not just from people up here, but the people working the street, you know, the cop working the beat, DPW out there, you know, librarians, the whole nine yards. So among our accomplishments, I'm really glad that the unsolicited written materials ordinance passed tonight. Really happy that we got that through for Jean, who's watching, who's in the senior group. And so the, however, one of my proudest moments up here was to offer the amendment to Councilwoman Musick's ordinance to ban conversion therapy to make it a crime. We were the first ones in the state to do it, and I plan on being an advocate for other cities to pass similar ordinances Berkeley has, Huntington Woods has it, but to actually criminalize the conduct. The more so that cities pass things, it gets, it bleeds over into the state level, which is exactly where this needs to be. So I plan on still continuing working on that issue. The other thing, too, is that with new people coming in, we're going to have a historic Council. We're going to have a first female majority Council, four out of five. Greg, you're going to be the lone man up here, but I look forward to it. All three of my opponents in the race, we've all talked since the election. I'm actually going to meet with Laura. We were texting, trying to get plans so we can share insights and collaborate before she takes office up here. I've also, Rolanda actually reached out to me, and we're going to work on a project, a mutual project, that we both strongly believe in. And then, of course, Mary Ann, too, who was part of that. But I also want to say, even though we have a historic Council going in, I'm very happy that I was a part of this historic Council, because this is the first time I believe in the state that we've had LGTB majority on a city council. And so, given that, I thought that was quite a thing, but I also thought it was quite a thing is because the newspaper and media didn't really seize on it, and it just shows the sign of the times and how things are improving quite a bit. So I really appreciate being a part of that. I do plan service in the future, Fern Care on the board. I've already talked to Ann Heller about getting on the Fern Care board. And then, of course, Civil Service Board, and then I've also put in an application for the Brownfield redevelopment thing. I will say just to all the residents out there that we have the most remarkable city staff and structure around. The amount of work that goes into things, these meetings actually last long, but they go a lot quicker, because the research is done, the information's in the packet, clarifications are made, and we can pass things. Not a lot of cities can say the same thing. And so I'm proud of all of our staff from, you know, from people on the front lines all the way up to the City Manager's Office, who really put their all into it. A couple of employees that really stood out to me, even though I've worked with some of you more than others, but it was truly a pleasure working with Captain Emmy. I thought it was so, I just liked the connection, because we both grew up here. We were both here in the 80s. We both know the history of the city, where it's been, where it's going, what it needs, things like that. So I want to just say, definitely want to point that out, as well as the Fire Chief. As we all know, police officers, which I'm a former police officer, and firefighters, we're sibling rivalries. And so, there they go. Look at them, right back there. There's Ferndale. But it's been really nice working with Jack, and getting to meet a lot of the firefighters, and just learning just different things through firefighting gives me a whole new respect for things. So I appreciate that. And just on the other end, I just want to say that one of the people who made the most impact on me was Justin and Jordan. Reason being is I don't find planning the most interesting thing in the world. I don't find that. I'm a public safety guy, I'm budgeting, but the planning part is very interesting. And it's weird that Jordan always says nerds like him, planning nerds, that I started becoming kind of a planning nerd and reading everything I could. And actually, the Brownfield redevelopment is a direct, my application to Brownfield redevelopment is a direct from a discussion with you, Jordan. Other than that, City Clerk's Office, thank you so much. When I was first appointed, I was shell-shocked. I was almost lost as to how to do things. Midterm, there's no real onboarding process, so you just kind of jump in. My mom actually said, what do you do with, you know, this or that? I just, that's easy. Just call Clerk's Office. She'll tell me what to do. So, which is what I did between you and Barb. And then the City Manager's Office, of course, we have some good memories, especially the night of your wife going into labor. So in the parking lot, we had a great time, you and Jordan.
Thank you for that.
Oh, yeah, it was excellent. And to Dan, our city attorney, you know, over 20-plus years. Most city attorneys don't make it several years, let alone 20-plus years. It's a very political position. They can do their job. I'm a lawyer. Look, you can do your job. You can do it to the best of your ability, but the political winds change. It's amazing to me that Dan Christ has sat up here for over two, almost three decades, I believe. Not that long?
Yeah, that'll take.
Okay. It was over 20 years, but just in dealing with him over the years, I've dealt with him as a witness. I've dealt with him as a defense attorney. I've seen your compassionate side as well, representing a client who was probably not too deserving. But Dan actually stopped in to help me convince the judge across the street to give some leniency and to give this kid a chance. And that kid is doing very well today. So I do appreciate all that. And to my friend Greg, I would not be up here if it wasn't for you. I remember when I broached putting in for the appointment, I said, I'll just run in the election and we'll see. And just having that discussion with you changed everything, changed the trajectory, changed my life. So I appreciate that. Raylan, my BFF, I always say my Council BFF, two-thirds conversations in the middle of the night via Facebook outpost. She'll say, oh, you're up. Perfect. What do you think about this? And now we're reading documents, and it's like four. Now I got to go to bed. I got to be in court at eight. So it was a true pleasure, and those conversations aren't going away. Aunt she gave me a Star Wars Christmas tree, which is great with Chewbacca. One of the ordinance is up here. Look at my Facebook page. I posted that up. And then Julie, of course, this is somebody I really didn't know before she got on the Council. And what I find amazing is how close I've gotten you and how much you've changed my mind on certain things, especially marijuana issues. So I got to say, as close as we become, and we started just hanging out, our last Council meeting, we were at the Elks Club after. And so I look forward to a lot more volunteering with Pride and sponsorships and working with you. And lastly, to Dan, I've known you for, you know, 10 years.
Yeah.
You did great. One of my, one of my other proudest moments here was making the motion to appoint you as the mayor.
Thanks.
You were the right man for the job at the right time, and I think you served very well, and I think you've led extremely well.
Thank you.
And I appreciate it. So other than that, thank you, everybody. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas, Happy Kwanzaa, all that good stuff, and have a Happy New Year, and we'll see. The horizon's bright, and the future's bright for Ferndale with your new elected officials working with all the residents and staff. So thank you.
Thanks. It's a very short amount of time. When you say seven months ago, I'm not going to run again, to getting to your last Council meeting. It's amazing how quick that time flies. I'd like to thank Carlos for not taking my picture off the wall already. I'd like to thank Dennis for taking up all my time, so I have nothing else to say.
Phil must.
I know, right? No, truly, I just, I'm just overwhelmed with a sense of gratitude. And I'm just going to be preventative. I'm a crier, so I'm going to really try hard not to do that. Not that, I'm totally comfortable with this decision not to run again, but it's hard to walk away from such an extraordinary group of people. And I'm not walking away. I'm going to be around, probably more so than many would wish. But it's just been a tremendous, humbling honor to serve the last eight years on this Council. I've served with some really incredible people. I was just mentally going through Scott Galloway, Mike Lennon, Melanie Piana, David Coulter, all of whom I've served with here. And when people ask me what I'm proudest of from an accomplishment perspective over the last eight years, there's a lot of things I can point to. I now know more about chickens and drain culverts than anyone ever should, but it's mostly that everything we did, I feel like we did it while we maintained civility, while we encouraged each other, even when we disagreed with each other, and we never were afraid of running away from a tough problem. And I can say that with pride and honesty and friendship with all of my Council colleagues, including the ones here today. I think, I think the whole eight years has been extraordinary. I think the short time that we've been a kind of a Council in transition, a lot of Councils would have just folded up and punched the clock and got to the end. And we got to the end, but we were also incredibly productive, and I'm very grateful to all of you for that. To city staff, Joe and April, the city managers, while I've been here, and all of the city managers, I've said this in a number of forums, and I'll continue to say it, the people of Ferndale should be incredibly proud from every department in this city. We have the most extraordinary group of city employees who are committed to be innovative, to finding the most inspiring ways to do things, and truly have the residents and the people who do business here, and the people who come into our downtown to play their best interests at heart. It is, I'm moved continually by all of the city staff's dedication to the commitment to the city and working hand-in-hand with public officials. That's something else you don't see a whole lot, where staff and city officials can sit and work together as colleagues, and not as, you know, some invisible structure that happens at that barrier. And I'm just so incredibly grateful for all of that, and from all of you and for that time. I'm going to continue to be around. I want to be accessible to the new folks coming in, who will continue to be my Council and be my mayor, and I'm available anytime, and will continue to be involved. But I know, and one of the reasons I can go on confidence that the spirit of the city, and the spirit of the work that we have all done together, will continue to move us forward, no matter what the next crisis is, or the next bike lane is, or how high the next building is, or any of the other fun stuff that we continue to tackle, as long as you all don't do roundabouts, then I'm going to raise an army. But otherwise, I just, I just, I just, again, it's with a lot of gratitude and humility. You guys have been awesome. I'm so, again, appreciative and humbled, and I can't wait to see what's coming next, because I know we're all going to be a part of it, regardless of what role we're going to be in. So God bless. Have a happy holidays. With that, we are adjourned.